Matt Worth-Morland, Post Two at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post Three at Large. Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One.
Here.
Councilmember Aria Faroke, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three. Councilmember Jason Dozier, District Four.
Present.
Councilmember Lillian Bactieri, District Five. Councilmember Alex Wong, District Six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven. Councilmember Mary Norrie, District Eight. President Protem, Dustin Hillis, District Nine.
Present.
Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District Ten.
Present.
Councilmember Marcy Coliver Overstry, District Eleven. Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District Twelve. Mr. President, we do have a call of members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Councilmember Shook, seconded by Councilmember Winston. We can take this by unanimous consent. Madam Clerk, if you'll sign the count of unanimous members present.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Nine yeas, zero nays. The agenda is adopted. We do not have a pastor for the invocation, so I will collect any thoughts and members from members that would like to have a moment of silence for, any council members? Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. I do want to acknowledge the unfortunate incident that took place in Minnesota earlier this weekend, the passing of State Representatives Melissa Hortman, her husband Mark, and then the wounding of State Senator John Hoffman and his wife Yvette. And so recognizing the environment that we're in, the political climate that we're in, as elected officials, I think it's important that we stand in solidarity with all of our members across the country to denounce the citizens' acts of violence that are being conducted against political elected officials across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dozier. Any others before we move into a moment of silence? Okay. Everyone, please join me in a moment of silence as we remember those mentioned and those unmentioned. Thank you. If you'll now stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to our proclamations, I would like to ask Councilmember Bond is not present yet, so we will move to, I would like to welcome Councilmember Winston, as well as Councilmember Lewis, and those here for the elementary school proclamations, Kendesi at Gideon's, T. H. Slater, and Parkside Elementary School. Please join us on the dais for these three proclamations that will be taken together. Thank you.
Wait. Yes. All right, thank you, everybody. I'm Jason Winston, Councilmember for District One. And today we have members of the Atlanta Citizens Review Board, as we are honoring students and schools who won the art essay and verbal expression contests that we have today. But before I get started, I want to welcome Deputy Executive Director Myola Smith to tell us about the awards that they're giving away today.
Thank you, Councilmember Winston, and all the honorable members of the Atlanta City Council. First of all, I don't believe all of our contestants are up here, so would you please come to the podium? Thank you. I am Deputy Director, overseeing community outreach for the Atlanta Citizens Review Board, along with Naomi Bonneman, Community Affairs Coordinator, Cree Cornish, Office Manager, and Charles Curry, Outreach Specialist, Public Information Officer. From August 2024 through January 2025, the Atlanta Citizens Review Board sponsored an art essay contest. The title for the contest was "My Dream for a Just World: One City, One Team: Citizens and Police Working Together." Today, inside of Cafe 55, in honor of these contest winners and schools, we held a reception prior to the council meeting to award gifts, prizes, and certificates. We want to use this time before the City Council and the City of Atlanta to publicly acknowledge these winners and thank their families and friends for supporting their desire to enter the contest. Thanks to Blick Art Supplies for making art supplies available to the public schools and youth clubs in Atlanta. We'd also like to thank the entire ACRB staff, Executive Director Reed, Sheena Robertson, Deputy Executive Director, and the rest of the staff. I won't go through the rest of them. We would also like to thank, in particular, Councilmember Winston and Councilmember Lewis for supporting us and getting us on today's agenda. At this time, I would like to introduce the Executive Director of the ACRB, Mr. Samuel Lee-Reed.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Shipman, and honorable members of the Atlanta City Council for allowing us this opportunity to present and recognize our honored guests, the winners of the 2025 ACRB Art and Essay Contest, the kids, adults, families, and participating schools and community groups. The reason we host this contest every two years is to promote safe neighborhoods and positive relations through artistic expression, academic instruction, and meaningful dialogue among children, families, and law enforcement to understand any issues that could potentially lead to mistrust and unrest within the local communities. ACRB creates offers and promotes events and programs like the Art and Essay Contest, and our, excuse me, the Art and Essay Contest, the mediation program, and our Know Your Rights trainings, to foster peaceful relationships between citizens and those who have the most sworn power to protect and serve them. This year, we had over 400 entries. That's a new record for us. Thank you, thank you. As Deputy Director Ms. Smith stated earlier, the contest ended in January, and the votes, the winners were voted on and selected based on the number of votes they received for their art essay and verbal expression. Without further delay, let's recognize the winners of 2025. Mr. Curry, please read the names of the winners in the ACRB Art and Essay Contest, Verbal Expression. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Reed. Winners, as I call your name, if you are present here today, please step forward away from the others so that everyone can see who you are, and then step back in line, starting with City of Atlanta Elementary School, Grade One through Five. City of Atlanta Elementary School Art, first place, Geneveer Alashine, Parkside Elementary School. All right. Second place, Tahari Perry Bolton Academy. Third place, Ava Segal, Parkside Elementary School. Honorable mention, Chloe McMillan, Centennial Academy. Moving on. Ma Koyate, Ron Clark Academy. Second place from Ron Clark Academy, Ndehe Fatu Giar. Third place, Morgan Rose Jordan. Honorable mention, Valentina Loden, Ron Clark Academy. City of Atlanta Middle School Essay, first place, Christian Mckahay, Centennial Charter Academy. Second place, Alana Salam, Luther Judson Price Middle School. Third place, Zoria Salam, Luther Judson Price Middle School. Honorable mention, from Wesley International Academy, Kingston Carter. Kudos to our middle school winners. Moving on to high school, Grades Nine through Twelve, City of Atlanta High School Essay, first place, Mariam Hashem, North Atlanta High School. Second place, Malachi Rose Pitts, South Atlanta High School. Congratulations to our middle school winners. Moving to college and university, City of Atlanta College University Essay, first place, Ryan M. Wombo from Morehouse College. Second place, Alicia Edwards, Atlanta Technical College. Third place, Sam Akua, Georgia State University. College University, City of Atlanta Verbal Expression, first place, Majesty Kinnabru. And now, the special open entry category for the City of Atlanta and surrounding counties. Special open entry art category, first place, Naomi Thorne, E.C. West Elementary School. Second place, from Oakley Elementary School, Carmen Matthews. We have two honorable mentions in this category. First, from Oakley Elementary School, Michaela Murray. And Shanna Hawkins. Special open entry essay, first place, Trinity Watson. Second place, from South Gwinnett High School, Carmen Varnes. Honorable mention, Alfreda Johnson. Special open entry verbal expression, first place, Mario Nkosi Howell. From the Soul Food Siphon. All right. Second place, Jamie Hall. Honorable mention, Hadassah Felix. Congratulations to our special open entry winners. Now it's time to acknowledge the schools and faculty for their contribution. Councilmember Winston?
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulation to all of our art essay contest winners, those who participated. Can we get another round of applause for everybody that participated in this? It's so great to see everyone that was part of this. You know, I like to tell my colleagues that we say District One is number one for a reason. And I want to send a special shout out to all the schools that were in my district that participated in this. We had Ron Clark Academy, we had Parkside Elementary, Wesley International, we had Slater, we had Price Middle School. So congratulations to all of those that participated that were from District One. I know Councilmember Lewis is behind me, he'll have a little something to say about the schools in his district as well, but just want to go ahead and give out the Spirit Award to the two schools that participated. So we'll have Principal Foster from Parkside Elementary, and I think we have Principal Moultrie from T. H. Slater. Would you both come forward? We have a representative from Slater, I think that was here as well, but we'll give this award out to you both. But I have proclamations, and I'm going to read them together because they basically say the same thing for both of you. So in recognition of Parkside Elementary and T. H. Slater Elementary School, whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize the support and participation of public schools, libraries, colleges, recreation centers, and community centers from Atlanta and surrounding counties in the Atlanta Citizen Review Board's 2025 Art, Essay, and Verbal Expression Contest, and whereas hundreds of students and adults from Atlanta and surrounding counties participated in the contest using their unique skills, perspectives, and experiences to respond to the theme "My Dream for a Just World: One City, One Team: Citizens and Police Working Together," and whereas the 2025 contest engaged more than 400 students and community members of all ages, highlighting the power of creative expression to foster dialogue and understanding. Whereas Parkside Elementary and T. H. Slater Schools exemplified due diligence by ensuring students' entries were prepared accurately and submitted on time to main their eligibility. And whereas the Atlanta City Council and the Atlanta Citizens Review Board does recognize these schools and their principals for their steadfast commitment to the arts and communities they serve, now therefore be proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby recognize T. H. Slater Elementary School and Parkside Elementary School as it recognizes with the Spirit Award for showing exemplary spirit in the Atlanta Citizens Review Board 2025 Art, Essay, and Verbal Expressions Contest. Congratulations to everybody. Now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Antonio Lewis.
Did y'all hear what he said a little earlier? He got a lot to say about District One, right? But my district, District Twelve, I don't know if y'all know, it had just as many individual contest winners as District One. So when you look at the numbers, right, when people actually doing it, and, 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 and he and I both know that Prior Road is the dividing line. And so if he mentions the two schools, Slater and Price, Prior Roads, they sit on Prior Roads, so we share those. So not only did District Twelve have the second-largest group of collective winners selected from following schools, Atlanta Technical College, Atlanta Metropolitan State College, and my beloved alma mater, South Atlanta High School. You can clap for that. We got some purple and teal in here, right? Today, I would like to acknowledge and honor District Twelve schools and one school in particular, one school in particular that was selected to receive the Spirit Award for the student, for the student body having the most school spirit. Today, we would like to award that to Kendesi at Gideon's Elementary School. Kendesi, Kendesi, I apologize. I want to say something else. In District Twelve, the first thing I did when I got elected was create the Arts Task Force, District Twelve Arts Task Force, and the leaders of that Arts Task Force were from the Pittsburgh community. And so to see Price, Slater, and Gideon's all win, it means a lot to our area. So congratulations again. But before, and before I pass it to you, similar to my colleague, I'd like to read the proclamation to you. Similar, it says the same thing, but I got you. Whereas, the Atlanta City Council is pleased to honor the support and participation by Atlanta and surrounding counties, public schools, libraries, colleges, recreations, and community centers in the Atlanta Citizen Review Board 2025 Arts Essay and Verbal Expression Contest, and whereas, hundreds of students and adults in Atlanta are, sorry, hundreds of students and adults in Atlanta and surrounding counties competed in the 2025 Arts Essay and Verbal Expression Contest, using their unique skills, abilities, thoughts, and experiences to draw or write a response to the contest theme "My Dream for a World Just, for a Just World: One City, One Team: Citizens and Police Working Together," and whereas, the 2025 Arts Essay and Verbal Expression Contest was supported by some 400-plus citizens and students of all ages in Atlanta and all surrounding counties who entered and competed, and whereas, Kendesi at Gideon's Elementary School was deemed by staff as being supportive and encouraging the student body to get involved, and because they submitted more entries than any other school, college, recreation, or community center in the City of Atlanta, and whereas, the City of Atlanta and the citizen, and the Atlanta Citizen Review Board acknowledged Kendesi at Gideon's Elementary School, its student body, Principal Orns, and Ms. Kanika Winfrey, Ms. Kanika Winfrey Diop, Ms. Kanika Winfrey Diop, Family and Community Engagement Specialists for their unwavering commitment to the arts and community they serve. Now therefore be proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby bestow the Spirit Award in honor of Kendesi at Gideon's Elementary School, a key stakeholder of the Atlanta Citizens Review Board 2025 Arts and Essay and Verbal Expression Contest. Now, we share that. I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. We have a frenzy banter about these schools, but, you know, in all honesty, I know that we both love and respect all the schools and all the students that live in our districts, and so just happy to support each and every one of you. Before I turn it over to Executive Director Reed, I just wanted to see if any of my colleagues had anything. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to, oh, sorry, Councilmember Collins.
I know what she represents in our community right there. Yes, right there.
Yes, I just want to take the moment, I'm just so, for me, it's just so honoring, such a full circle moment, to see some of the great leaders I used to work with at APS when I served on the school board, and just to see the great work that's coming out of Kendesi at Gideon's, I remember the hard work we've done in that space, so just wanted to thank the leadership for making sure that our students have these opportunities and are where. South Atlanta, I'm always forever die love, hornet, and just to Atlanta Public Schools, and thank you so much to the city and the city council for making sure that the school system and our students are showcased wherever we can. So congratulations again to all the beautiful babies that have won. We're really excited for you all, and even our older babies, even though you're still in college, you're still our children of the city, so congratulations again, well deserved.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. And at this time, I will bring up Atlanta Citizen Review Board's Executive Director, Mr. Samuel Reed.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Winston, for supporting the schools in your district, and for this important contest that gives us children, gives our children an opportunity to have a voice and to be heard. Finally, ACRB would like to recognize the school that had the most entries in the entire contest. In fact, they had over 100. In the special open entry category, which did not have, which did not have an age limit, and was open to the City of Atlanta residents and few other county neighbors, we have any representatives from Cedar Grove Elementary School, Principal Norman Thomas, or Art Director Dr. Dokova Triplet. Here we go. Well, thank you for participating in our contest. So on behalf of... Thank you, Dr. Triplet. On behalf of the ACRB, Cedar Grove Elementary School in Ellwood, is our privilege to acknowledge your school and student body with the School Spirit Award for submitting more entries than any other school, college, recreation, or community center in the eligible 2025 contests. Special thanks to you for all your hard work to make this our largest contest to date. Thank you to you and Principal Thomas and Dr. Triplet, me and you. Thank you.
So again, thank you, everyone, for being here and participating in this art essay contest. Expressionism is so important, especially for our youth, and just so glad to see so many people participating in something that brings our communities, our police officers, and our public safety officials together for something positive. And so that's very important. I say one more time, we'll give a round of applause for everybody that participated. And as Councilmember Bond says, we'll do what we do best, we'll all come up and take a photo, so.
All right, at this time, while everyone clears out, I'll welcome Councilmember Michael Julian Bond up for a proclamation and recognition of Ms. Keisha Walker.
Is she here?
Thanks for presenting.
Oh, I was looking for you the other way.
How are you?
I'm doing pretty good. How are you doing?
I appreciate you today.
Oh, no, it's no problem. Is this you? You don't have people with you? Oh, okay.
She's shy, the exact opposite of me.
All right. Well, I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. It is a pleasure...
It is a pleasure to be here today. Oh, yeah. Yeah. If I can have everyone's attention, please. Thank you. It is really a pleasure and an honor to be here today. I'm presenting a proclamation on behalf of our president, Mr. Doug Shipman, but I'm glad that it fell upon me to do so, to honor someone that I have known for a very long time, a very good friend of mine, Ms. Keisha Walker. And I understand that her mother is in the audience. Where is mom? Mom, wave your hand. Let's give mom a big round of applause. And so we have here today a proclamation in recognition of Ms. Walker, and it reads in pertinent part, "In recognition of Ms. Keisha Walker, whereas in October of 1998, Keisha Walker launched what would become an award-winning agency, Insights Marketing and Promotions, specializing in corporate sports, marketing, promotions, and special events, created to the urban and professional consumer segments of marketing managers in 28 cities throughout the United States." And whereas based in Atlanta, Georgia, Insights has crafted and curated events nationally during noteworthy ventures, including NFL Super Bowls, NBA All-Star Weekends, the Kentucky Derby, and the Essence Music Festival, to name a few. Whereas having worked with the powerhouse individuals and corporate brands such as Beyonce, CoverGirl, Magic Johnson, Bristol Myers, Swim, and Victoria's Secret, Ms. Walker intuitively knew that that the footprint and impact could be expanded. And whereas Keisha learned to look through her longtime love of gaming and has founded the Black Collegiate Gaming Association, making history in the process and becoming the first African-American woman to own a collegiate sports and gaming company. Whereas, yeah, that's great, isn't it? Whereas BCGA is a double minority-owned collegiate sports and gaming company with with the goal to create a pipeline for blacks, blacks and women of color, college students to gain corporate roles within the gaming and tech industries. And whereas BCGA specializes in sports and gaming education, producing professional gaming summits and conferences, connecting student talent and top companies for internship and career opportunities, touching corporate partners for scholarship and mentorship opportunities to the HBCU colleges and students that are formerly known as charter member institutions of BCGA. And whereas as a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, an alum of Florida A&amp;M University, Ms. Walker engages her networks and like-minded peers to support others in their entrepreneurial and educational pursuits. She highly values family and credits her mother with instilling in her the importance of education and working tirelessly to ensure that she's had opportunities to excel. For more than 26 years, she has taken barriers and set, she's broken barriers and has set standards in industries not traditionally welcoming to women. And now therefore we, the members of Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, hereby proclaim this day of June as the Keisha Walker Day in our great city. And witness thereof, we have set our hands and have called the seal of the city of Atlanta to be here into a fix. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any comments from our colleagues? Sorority sister, you want to say something? All right. Right, that's this is her sorority sister. Okay, y'all good? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Now we hear from our honorary Ms. Walker. Please, the podium is yours.
Thank you, everyone. Good day and to God be the glory. I appreciate this opportunity. And to all the young women in the room, know that if you put God first, anything is possible. He is the reason why I'm here. I want to thank all of our 19 member HBCU institutions, especially Morris Brown College right here in Atlanta. They were the first HBCU to offer a gaming degree in the country to students and paving the way, of which there were three graduates, one a female and two men. So we're super excited about what we're doing, building gaming and innovation labs around the country to help students understand that through gaming, they can love, embrace, and be successful in the technology industry. I want to thank all of my colleagues, all the young men and women who've had a chance to work with me the past 26, almost 27 years. I've been happy to be since day one, based here in the city of Atlanta. We start off in Midtown, and we've been in Buckhead the last 19 years. I love the city of Atlanta. I'm also on the board of Hosea Helps and love giving back in the community and supporting those who are the working poor and less fortunate. And I ask that you all continue to support those that are less fortunate. You never know who your neighbor, who you're working with may be poor and more importantly, homeless and in need. We've got to support now more than ever our communities and embrace our communities and support those who are less fortunate, to the divine eye and to all of the amazing people who support the work that we do and continue to help us to be successful. Thank you. Councilmember Bond, we've been working on this a long time. We also have the chance to make history this year to being the first female-owned agency to produce both the SWAC and the SIAC basketball tournaments, one of which took place right here in Atlanta at Moore's, at Morehouse College and Clark Atlanta University. So we're super excited to continue to make history and to let women know we are amazing and can do anything and everything with God's grace. Thank you so much. And mom, I love you. Oh, and to President, to President Shipman, who wasn't able to be here, thank you for the honor and safe travels. Oh, and Mayor Dickens, you know I love you.
All right, for our next proclamation, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond will remain with us, and we will welcome up to the DIAS community and youth advocate, Brenda Davenport, and her friends.
Will all those who are here in support of Ms. Davenport, please join us, as many as possible. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
You got the chair, it ain't go through.
Yeah. Y'all feeling a lot better yet? Uh, thank you, Doc. Man, I was great Saturday morning. Y'all doing good? See, you doing good?
Bring Abel here.
Yeah, she needs to be right.
Abel, excuse me now. Excuse me, y'all.
Is that everyone? Is that everybody? Not yet? Where is Judge Patsy Porter? Maybe come a little closer. Are there any other elected officials here? If there are elected officials, please move closer to the podium. Where's Judge Sykes? All right, and we got, of course, Reverend James Durley with us. We have a lot of Atlanta and regional and national notables here. And so I'm going to ask at a certain point that we acknowledge people, you know, down the line, but we want to, we want to get to honoring someone who has been not only a servant leader in our community, but one who has continually, faithfully, ardently, persistently washed the feet of others in our community. Brenda Davenport has served the greater community for many, many years and has really had been the glue and the underpinning of, and working with many other civil rights leaders over those decades. And what has often been said, but not often enough acknowledged, in the human and civil rights movement, where men are often projected as the head or the leader, is that there'd be no movement. There'd be no success. There'd be no marches. There'd be no activism. There'd be no work without women in the movement. And so with that, before I read the proclamation, we have a video that we will now show.
I want to remind you of something that Mrs. Parks also told me as my friend, as my mentor, my spirit was tired, not my body. So we thank you, Mrs. Rosa Parks, and we will continue to fight to make your birthday a national holiday.
Brenda Davenport is determined to make a difference. Each year, she joins with city leaders, Parks family members, and residents to commemorate the birthday of Rosa Parks, who's considered the mother of the modern-day civil rights movement. During this acknowledgement of National Transit Equity Day, Martha featured a replica of the bus Parks boarded in Montgomery, Alabama in 1955.
Because I had the pleasure of working with her and knowing her personally, I feel obligated to keep the story going.
That sense of obligation also compels her to impart the knowledge and words of wisdom she received from Parks to everyone she encounters. Her passion only intensified over decades of meetings, planning, training, and marches. Like a fire, it was sparked after the Southern Christian Leadership Conference selected her as youth director.
Brenda always said, we gotta go make a difference. So let me go out here and make a difference in the community.
Felicia Stanley Johnson is the founder and CEO of Madioc Inc. For 21 years, this nonprofit has been providing mentorship, tutoring, and life skills training for young people. It's an organization so inspired by Davenport, her mantra became the organization's acronym, Madioc, is making a difference in our community. Davenport spoke at her school when she was only 13 years old.
Brenda immediately put us to work. Uh, she goes like, we can't even have conventions, we need these letters mailed out, we need these stamps on the letter. And we was just sitting at the conference table and we was filling the letters and we was just, but we were so excited to be in the SCLC building.
Jeremy Pons refers to Davenport as his aunt, but also sees her as a mother figure. He met Davenport in 1997, right before his 12th birthday. He was already an accomplished public speaker, making news, reciting the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
She told me, Dr. Lowry is retiring July of this year, this is 97. And also, it's our 40th anniversary. We'd love for you to come speak for his retirement.
That opportunity paved the way for the Panama City native and Morehouse man to engage in the movement. He would meet many of the civil rights heroes he had only read about. He would go on to make history as the youngest person to open an SCLC chapter in Panama City. He was 17.
She brought a whole delegation from Atlanta down to this installation service. And when you looked at that church, you had black, white, Latino, Asian, it was just pretty much community.
Deborah Scott met Davenport as a student activist at Clark Atlanta University.
My third or fourth day here, I walked in SCLC, and there Brenda was in her brilliant self, organizing us as youth. So Brenda and I go back 40-plus years.
She says Davenport taught them the importance of discipline and the use of nonviolent principles as they organized two major projects. They were protesting Nelson Mandela's imprisonment, the Students Against Apartheid movement, while simultaneously working with Coretta Scott King on establishing a national holiday for Martin Luther King Jr.
Brenda was that bridge with us, with the rest of the students on campus. I was a campus leader, I was vice president of the student body at the same time. Bernice King was vice president of the student body over at Spelman. So we had this trifecta of what we called the Blue Crew.
I did put my heart into breathing everything I had into our young people because I wanted them to be the best young person they could be. I wanted them to learn early about our history, about our story, and then help build your own story. Only so much falls on photograph. And as many as I could touch, there would be that photograph to take the message and go a little step higher. That's what I wanted to do. I know I gave it my best. I know that I wanted them to be the best that they could be because a lot of times all they need is the encouragement, the empowerment, and the opportunity to see life differently.
She's touched so many of us that she deserves this honor, she deserves this award, and I'm just glad to see her get her flowers while she's living.
She is definitely an unsung hero. I run Georgia Stand Up because of Brenda.
My mom's been deceased since 2017, my grandmother, 2020, my dad, 2022. So I pretty much lost everybody in my immediate family. One person I still have love. That's Brenda Davenport. Sorry to do this, but you know, I can't hold this emotion in because she, she has done so much stuff and not asked for nothing in return. So for her to receive this celebration at this juncture, this a blessing, it's a long road to do. So for her to receive this, uh, celebration at this juncture, this a blessing, it's, it's a long road to do.
At first, I ask, are there any colleagues that'd like to say a word? Counsel, Councilman Boone?
First, I'd like to thank my colleague, the Honorable Michael Julian Bond, for honoring this warrior princess for the people, not of Atlanta, but for this region. When Brenda calls, we answer. When Brenda calls, we answer. And then she says, "I want more, I need more, I need more, I need more." So thank you for what you have done for not only the seniors, but for the children, making sure that they have not forgotten their history. Thank you for taking care of the late Uncle Reverend Fred Taylor. He taught us so much, taught her so much, loved her and was so proud to call you daughter. So Brenda, this is just a small token of our appreciation. And everyone, let's support the Rosa Parks Consortium. Let's support Brenda. When she calls, let's continue to pick up the phone. And I want to thank Phyllis Turner and Vanessa Manley, who have always worked side by side to help her do what she wanted to do. Thank you.
Next, we'll have a city council alumnus and a former state representative. She's very shy, but we know her affectionately as Abel Mabel Thomas.
A first, first given honor to God, he's the leader of my life. It's always a blessing to be with family because that's who we are. The family that prays together stays together. So we must continue to pray for each other, specifically Brenda, because Brenda is an organizer, a creative mind. And when Brenda says she wants to make Rosa Parks a national holiday, we gotta get on board with that and just go and make that happen. No matter what's at, at the top, the top top is the Lord. And if you're, you see, the Lord is on our side. But in the spiritual realm, we got to get on the Lord's side. And we can do anything but fail. The people united will never be defeated. The people united will never be defeated. The people united will never be defeated. And another thing is, they say get back, we say fight back. That's right, we gotta fight back, y'all. But Brenda actually changed the trajectory of my political life. When Andrew Young was running for mayor of the city of Atlanta, all the people that I was hanging with was with Reginald, A. Reginald Eves. And so I was with the, I wanted to be with the, uh, Reggie Raiders, okay? And, and, and I met, uh, Reggie Eves, and he was so charismatic and wonderful, and all my friends were there. And when I told Brenda I was gonna go with the mayorship with the Reggie Raiders, she said, "Oh, no. Oh, no." She said, "You cannot do that. Come on with me. Let's go over to the Andrew Young campaign for mayor." And that changed my life. You get what I'm saying? I would've picked the wrong candidate starting off in the beginning and would've missed Deborah Scott, Marcia, Dewey McLean, and all the other people, Brenda, that became a part of what we affectionately call the Blue Crew. We was the meanest machine in the street. Okay, we'd get to organizing and making things happen, but Brenda said, "Oh, no." That one "oh, no," and then took me to the Andrew Young campaign, and the rest is history. Let's give broader applause for her bringing in the game. Yeah, she brought me in the game, y'all. Y'all got to understand. So Brenda's always been a blessing, always looking out for the other person. You know, no matter what situation she was in, she made sure everybody was taken care of. Uh, Brenda, uh, told me about a story where she was, uh, doing this march, and she marched 26 miles. I'm like, "Brenda, how did you march 26 miles?" She said, "I just kept putting one foot in front of the other." All right, okay, okay? And when she got there to the thing, to the final, she was the last person to finish the race. And when she got there, she hadn't won a prize, but it wasn't an enterprise, she won a brand new car. So, so being persistent and committed to others, the Lord will always bless you. So continue, so continue to give because just the other day, I was in one place, my house needed done, and all of a sudden, three black men, three black men, uh, Clifford Palmer, Michael Sterling, and Randy Hazelton put the, came together and did a $200,000 plus renovation of my home in the bluff with new roof and solar. Come on now. Because the Lord will always do more for you than you expect him to do for you. He will go exceedingly abundant above what is expected. And the bottom line, you got to be a servant leader, and there's no greater servant leader than Brenda Joyce Davenport.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
Good afternoon, I am Pure Sykes. I'm one of 10 judges on the Atlanta Municipal Court. And, uh, I'll be brief, but I'll say if there is, uh, any young leader in this city, nine times out of 10, they have been under the tutelage or impact of Brenda Davenport. Uh, she has been a youth advocate for several decades. And, uh, although she doesn't look it, um, you know, we consider ourselves older, we're in our late 30s and 40s, but to the other gen, other generation, we are, we are the young leaders here. Uh, but Brenda's biggest lesson to me was, no matter what your station is in life, you can help somebody else. You can help somebody else. I, I, I'll say my, my first time leaving the country, I was a teenager here, grew up in Atlanta, uh, was Brenda Davenport bursting into the room and saying, "Y'all, we're going to Venezuela." And we were all not sure if she was serious, but, uh, her, her point was that we were going there to do, uh, mission work and to pass out school supplies, bring books, and other things to, uh, folks then living on a dictatorship rule in Venezuela. And I thought, you know, as a kid who grew up in Vine City, down the street from, from Abel Mabel, I thought we were the charity, I thought we were the poorest. So, uh, but it, it was life-changing and altering for me to, you know, be where I thought I was, the, on the bottom of the totem pole as the working class, and go to another country and see far worse poverty, to realize that there are folks who don't have shoes on a daily basis. There are folks who lack the necessary basics, uh, to function in life. And so I took a lot from that. Now, I won't talk about how we missed our flight coming back and we got sucked. But what I will say is, um, it was very eye-opening. And, and when we often talk about youth, uh, we don't talk as much about, uh, empowering those youth. We talk about just making sure that they have financial things met. But we also need to empower them. We need youth to know that you can do something regardless of how powerless you feel, regardless of where you come from, you have connections, and you have folks like Brenda in your corner, building you up, giving you the tools you need. So thank you, Brenda. I love you. You are a huge impact on my own life, and, uh, I see several folks here too who are other leaders and officers and folks who are leading this city. So we all owe it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. Now we'll have the president of SCLC, come on up.
Amen. Amen, how's everybody doing? I tell you, it is, um, hard to get up here and try to keep your words short. The brother told me to keep my words short. I would have to be remiss if I didn't acknowledge something that's very real about Brenda Davenport. You know, when you do this work, there are a lot of people who love to show up for these. They love microphones. They love cameras. They love crowds. They love to give their opinion when they will do no work to help that opinion come through. It's a lot of those folks. When I got in this seat at SCLC in September, one of the first people who called me to talk about doing some work was Brenda Davenport. And I think about what SCLC means to this city, what it means to this country, and I think we forget sometime. It's that second seat with Christians, right? Where we are right now today, the scripture says, "If my name be lifted up, I will draw all men unto me." Brenda lives a Christ-like life. Brenda does Christ-like work. So when they lifted her name up today, we filled this hall up because his name was up right here. The embodiment of Christ lives in the work of a Brenda Davenport, and that's why we're all here today. SCLC will always be eternally grateful to Brenda Davenport, not just for the work that she does, but for the actual embodiment. Brenda Davenport is everything that SCLC will ever be and everything should be, and we are more than excited and elated to stand here and applaud and support our sister who we love on this day. Thank you.
And now finally, we will have the pastor emeritus of Providence Baptist Church. And also, uh, I wanted to spell the rumor that he's under contract at the city council. He is often here to provide God's word to us. So without further ado, the esteemed Pastor Reverend Gerald Durley.
Thank you. I could not give my three-hour remarks unless I acknowledged a few names who are standing here with you. Reverend Joseph and Evelyn Lowry. C.T. Vivian. John Lewis. James Orange. Bernard Lafayette, Tyrone Brooks, J.T. Johnson. And all of those that are standing here, all of those that have gone on before. When we stand in places like this now, so many are gone. Joe Boone, I could call the road, and to stand here today and so many times we sing, I wonder if was there a song that could summarize your life? And I believe it was written by Jerry Butler. "Only the strong survive." "Only the strong survive." But she's not a survivor, she is an inspirer. You've inspired all of us for so many years. When I came to Atlanta and the way you would move and the way that you would talk and the way that you would smile. And you know, I'm around a lot of, a lot of people who complain. Who complain. How many of y'all ever saw Brenda complain about what she did not faith? She was all in there, she would always speak the truth. So today, you exemplify a song that we sing in the church. And I, I'm very particular, I told them, "Don't sing that song for me anymore." The song was, "You see them singing, the wigs fall off, the teeth fall out, 'Cause I'm on the battlefield." But don't sing that around this lady here, she wasn't on the battlefield, she was in the battle. There's a difference between being in the battle and on the battle. I know a lot of folks being on the battlefield and never got a scratch, never had a divorce, never had a debt. Brenda has always been in the battle. So today, we honor you for staying in the battle. Because only the strong survive. God bless.
I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, recognize one of my favorite constituents when I began my political career, Judge Patsy Porter.
Right.
Where are you? Where is she? Oh, you're behind her? Ev- everybody, uh, it's good to know the judge, amen? Judge, would you like to say something?
Good afternoon, members of the Atlanta City Council. Uh, it is my absolute honor to be here today with some of my heroes, uh, Abel Mabel Thomas, Tyrone Brooks, Gerald Durley. And I'm so glad today that we're celebrating my childhood friend, uh, Brenda Joyce Davenport. Uh, can anything good come out of John Hope, Atlanta Public Schools, Walker Street Elementary School, Booker Teller Fair Washington High School? Andre, can anything come out of there? It absolutely did in the person of Joyce Davenport. Many of us went to college to become doctors, lawyers, teachers, heads of industry. But do you know what Brenda Joyce Davenport's title is? Foot soldier. A foot soldier is someone that does all the heavy lifting behind the scene so that when the main attraction come on, they can shine and look good. Civil rights advocate, Rosa Parks, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Coretta Scott King, Dr. Joseph Lowry. Do you all hear me? Brenda Joyce Davenport is listed. Her job title and description is foot soldier and civil rights activist. And I hope one day it is a real job title that we pay with benefits, 401Ks, pensions, sick leave, vacation, all the things that all of us have done. Brenda Joyce Davenport gave it up for all of our kids. So you're right, whenever she calls, whenever Tyrone Brooks calls, whenever Abel Mabel calls, these are the people who every time something going on, you all, we all call them, they say, "Help us out." But we gotta take care of them. So I hope I live to see the day when a civil rights activist and a foot soldier will have a job title that comes with the same benefits as the heads of Delta, Southern Company, Coca-Cola. Because without the foot soldiers and the civil rights leaders of Brenda Joyce Davenport, she gave up her career for our kids so that we'll have each of these young men and women who've spoken. So my shero, my friend, I just say, "I'm so very proud of you." And I just say this, don't believe that she's all soft-spoken and easygoing because I can tell you, and when she comes to tell you that we fought every day, she started the fight. I did not pick a fight with her. But I love her dearly, and there's not a moment in my life that I don't think of her and our amazing friendship of over 60 years. That's how long it's since kindergarten. And no matter what has happened in my life, wherever I've been, I'm gonna see her head somewhere in there. I love you dearly, and I just wish you continued success in all that you do. And Councilman Boone, Councilman Bond, and all the ones who are around here. We need a job title with a pay scale and benefits for civil rights activists.
Oh, Ebenezer, who's representing Ebenezer? Oh, Reverend, come on up.
I will be brief. I'm Reverend John Vaughn, Executive Pastor at Ebenezer Baptist Church, Brenda's home church.
Yes.
Yes, I bring you greetings on behalf of our, on behalf of our senior pastors, the Reverend Dr. Raphael G. Warnock. Ebenezer's in the house.
Yeah, right, yeah?
And we are grateful for you and so much unseen behind the scenes in terms of your commitment to children and youth at Ebenezer. And so for that, we indeed are grateful. So God continue to bless you and keep you in all that you do. Amen.
I wanted to also acknowledge Brenda's sorority, the Sigma Gamma Rho Incorporated. Are you all here? Right down here in the front? Are you all going to step at all? Not today. Well, we'll get to the moment at hand. We have a proclamation from the city of Atlanta. The proclamation issued by the governing authority of the city of Atlanta, which is the Atlanta City Council, is the highest award that the city can present to a person, a place, or occasion. And I have the distinguished privilege and pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of our president and all 15 members of the Atlanta City Council. It reads in pertinent part, "In recognition of community youth advocate Brenda Davenport, whereas Brenda Davenport has been a steadfast advocate for youth empowerment and civic engagement throughout Atlanta and the broader southern region, whereas she played a pivotal role in organizing voting rights workshops in March of 1982, leading efforts to produce and involve young people in the movement for freedom and democratic participation." Whereas through the coordination with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference and other grassroots organizations- and other grassroots organizations, Ms. Davenport has tirelessly supported voter education, ensuring underrepresented communities are informed and empowered to exercise their rights. And whereas her unwavering dedication to civil rights, social justice, and community development has inspired countless individuals, especially the youth, to engage in public service, advocacy, and activism. And whereas Ms. Davenport's leadership exemplifies the highest ideals of citizenship and service, reinforcing Atlanta's cherished values of inclusivity, equality, and collective betterment. Now therefore, we, the members of Atlanta City Council, the half the citizens of the city of Atlanta, hereby proclaim this day as Brenda Davenport Day in our fair city. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and have called the seal of the City of Atlanta to be here."
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Do I need to start over?
Yes.
Thank you so much. You have certainly earned your crown because you saw it fit to recognize so many of us that may get an honorable mention. And I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for allowing me to be where my leader stood, Reverend Freddie Douglas Taylor.
Yes, leader.
And it is with much heart that I say to you, you have added to one of the biggest memories that I will always share as part of the City of Atlanta that I love and all of you that love me. I say thank you to the sorority, Sigma Gamma Rho, to my family, my sister. I have my only sister living. I had cousins that came in from Ohio. Deitra, thank you for coming. My college roommate came. Now y'all cannot ask her any questions. Unless you're asking her about while at Shaw University, when I painted, when I worked with the ones that painted the student government halls red, black, and green. I was also the one that had to paint it over when they found out. Or when I walked around in the march on the president, asking for better food and asking for, well, not, well, we were demanding, but we ended up with a little bit better food and better dorms. And with Brother McCasiff, he was here. He would always say, "Ready to go home? You ready to go home?" And I'd say, "I need to stay there just a little bit longer to put my footprint where Ella Baker was." And so I say thank you for that. I thank you for my sister, my nieces who are here. Some I didn't even know was coming showed up because they saw it. Thank you. It has been a plum pleasure to serve. Not work, because work you get real pay. I serve because my heart was in it. I thank you to the A.D. King Foundation, SLC, SLC Women, and my beloved Ebenezer Baptist Church. I thank you for the Rosa Parks Consortium and members of the Rosa Parks families here. And I thank you so much for sharing in this moment. We are more than just showing up for Rosa Parks. You guys have been like family to me, and I thank you for that. I thank you for allowing me to serve at the level that we were able to serve. I would be in the room with all those names Reverend Durley named, some of those names. Reverend Taylor, Reverend Osborne, E. Randall T., Frederick Moore, Reverend Love. And I would be the only female in the room. And the youngest female in the room.
And the toughest.
And the toughest. Someone said that she is really, there was a story, and she's here today. And I don't want her to really repeat it, but y'all know, for the ones that know, it was Rita Samuels. And Rita was hitting hard on me that day. And I knew my friend from Ebenezer was there, so I was trying to be Ebenezer. But Rita was just hitting so hard, so I had to come out that other person. And my girlfriend said, "I didn't know you had that in you. I've never seen you talk like that." I said, "You ain't no Mary Rita Samuels." That other person has to come out. But at every point of that, the best that is within me was always first. Because I understood that I had a mission to respect and give glory to God in every step that I made. I never start a project without asking God for direction. And sometimes some of my friends say, "Can you tone it down? Can you tone it down?" When I have to come back to you another time and another time and another time, it's because they telling me to tone it down because I'm asking for too much. But I don't ever think I'm asking for too much. Reverend Durley, I love you and I appreciate you. Abel Mabel, there's no words for our friendship and our relationship. I thank you, Ebenezer, for being there. DeMark, I'm sorry, President DeMark Liggins, I am so proud of you. And you do have, I will put everything I can to help your administration be the best administration. For if we don't move forward with SLC this time, if we don't move forward with SLC this time, I'll stop right there. So we're asking you for your support. We're asking you to help us build and rebuild because we are the conscience of America. And I do what I do because that conscience is in me. I sat at the foot with too many people to go to sleep. The Rosa Parks, the Johnny Carr, Coretta Scott Keen, Evelyn Lowry. That was not a mistake. That was God divine work in me. As Mabel wanted to say a little bit more, I came into this world at two pounds. So they had already given up on me. And my mother taught me that you came in here fighting to stay here. I really came in here to fight for us. That's why I had to fight so hard to stay here. And I haven't given up yet. There's one more battle. There's one more battle that I'm fighting right now. But today, you all had given me the courage to fight harder. We gonna get a kidney. And you all gonna help me. That kidney, that kidney.
What's your name?
We need a kidney. And we need your help to get that kidney. That fight is one that I cannot, I really think I have control of a lot of stuff. But this one I don't have control over. It is all about our community that would help me get that kidney. And I'm depending on you this time to be my back.
That's all right.
I thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. Sometimes we think, sometimes we think that is almost over. Sometimes we think that nobody's watching. Sometimes we think that what we're doing is not what we're supposed to be doing. But I have lived long enough and seen too many young people that come to me as they have said today, "Thank you." As we traveled to Selma, I think this has been my 40th year traveling to Selma with our young people. But the one I remember was this young lady crying when we got back on the bus. And I got nervous because see, I don't like children to cry because that makes it look like I did something wrong. And then they gonna tell their mama. And the young lady, I called her up and I said, "What's the matter?" She said, "They don't teach us this in school." I don't know, I didn't know any of this. I will always vote, Ms. Brenda, because you allow me to walk on hollow, holy ground and meet people that I never knew about. And then she said, "Why don't they teach this in school? Why don't we learn about Selma in school?" And then I said proudly, because that's our responsibility, our community, to go the extra step. So we cannot allow our history to go unwritten.
That's right.
Or allow them to take our history. We got to do it. And as I close, my leader would tell me, "Time oh, time oh, time is winding up. Time oh, time oh, time is winding up. So much corruption in the land, why don't the people take a stand? Time is winding up. Tell the president, time is winding up. Tell the president, time is winding up. So much corruption in the land, why don't the people take a stand? Time is winding up." Thank you and God bless you.
Let's hear Brenda another round of applause. Get another one. Come on, give it to her. And we're about to move to take a photo. Brenda, I wanted to make sure that I told you that your cousin, James Davenport, sends his regards. He cannot be here today. Oh, he made it? So you escaped from Grady. Is that what happened? Good to see you. And so we're gonna move up to take a photo. But as you move forward, I want you to know something. You don't ask for too much because you have always given more than anything you've asked for. So you keep doing it, you keep pressing. All right, let's gather up. As we gather around, let's just lift up Brenda in what made us all strong during the movement, just speaking with God. Eternal and Almighty Divine Righteous God, we have gathered in a Kairos moment to thank you for the life, the legacy of Brenda Davenport. We thank you, God, for all that she has, all that she is doing. And God, we heard a request today, something about a kidney, I believe. God, we know that you're able. So all those in agreement today said, "God, hear our plea. Give Brenda what she needs." And we're thanking you right now for the deliverance in the name of all the great prophets and our Lord and Savior. Everybody who agrees with this said, "Amen," and give Brenda the round of applause she deserved. Let her hear it downtown. Let her hear it at the Capitol Building. Let her hear it in Washington, DC. Brenda, you have done it.
We need everyone to move quickly to the left and the right. Please move quickly to the left and the right. We need everyone to move quickly to the left and the right. We need everyone to move quickly. We need everyone to move quickly. We need everyone to clear the chamber as quickly as possible. Please clear the chamber as quickly as possible. Will everyone please clear the chamber as quickly as possible?
All right, at this time, we're gonna move on to our next proclamation. So if everyone will clear the chamber, I welcome up Councilmember Amir Faroki, who will be presenting a proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month. Councilmember Faroki. Welcome Councilmember Faroki and everyone here for the proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month. Please join us on the dais. Thank you, President Protem Hillis. I'll wait till I'm joined by the attendees and we'll get going in one second. All right. Welcome, welcome. And I'm Councilmember Amir Faroki and in partnership with Council President Doug Shipman's office, I am honored today to be presenting a proclamation in celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month. I am both a ninth-generation Georgian and the son of an immigrant from Iran. And that would be enough for me to present this proclamation. But we're also living in a time in which it feels like we have sometimes forgotten that all of us, barring any Native Americans in the room, are here from somewhere else. Whether forced or voluntary, immigration is part of all of our stories and has built this country, continues to build this country in ways that sometimes gets lost in today's political rhetoric and action. And so it is with great honor today that I get to present this proclamation in celebration of- in celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month, which applies to all of us. And if you'll indulge me, I will read briefly from this proclamation and then invite Jaime to give some remarks. Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have contributed to the unique character, characters and robust, excuse me, robust economies of the city of Atlanta in the United States of America. Atlanta has long been a welcoming city and currently sustains 70 consular and trade offices, 31 bi-national chambers of commerce and 17 sister city relationships. And whereas immigrants contribute richly to the development of our landscape through accomplishments in business, technology and innovation, leadership, arts and culture, along with adding to the fabric of the faith community. Bringing distinctive perspectives, customs and ideas to the forefront, our immigrant communities add substantively to the growth of our society. And whereas the celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month began in 2014 with the purpose of giving immigrants and refugees the opportunity to explore and celebrate their backgrounds, an added purpose of the recognition is to raise awareness of how diversity and immigration are both essential elements of our social fabric. The city of Atlanta is proud to do its part toward the realization of these objectives. And I'm honored today to proclaim today, proclaim today, June 2025, Immigrant Heritage Month. You know, again, I present this with a little bit of a heavy overhang, as I mentioned at the top, because we do exist at a moment where our origins and our stories are being judged in ways that fail to remember that we're all, we're all from somewhere and we all have the same dreams and aspirations. And oftentimes what distinguishes being American from being from somewhere else in the world is just access to opportunity. We laugh at the same things, we have the same aspirations for our kids and our families. We contribute to society in meaningful and substantive ways, no matter what our professions are. And our American story is a very short one without the power and richness and hard work and sacrifice of immigrants. So I'm really thrilled to be able to present this today. I, Council President Shipman's office asked me to do so in his absence and I just feel blessed that I was able to do so. I notice off to my right, my colleague, Councilmember Bakayari and I, we're both children of immigrants. And I see her here, I'm hoping she's going to say something. I will turn it over to her before I turn it over to you, Jaime, if that's okay? And then we'll, we'll hear from our guests and take a, take a photo. Councilwoman Bakayari.
Thank you, Councilmember Faroki, and thank you to you all for being here. God, there's a number of things to thank you for. As Councilmember Faroki said, the time that we're in and I speak to y'all today, knowing that my father's hometown was bombed over the weekend and that I'm having to talk with my family about having to evacuate them from their country and their home. And I have to thank you because my father came here on the American dream because of folks in organizations like yours. And we're living in a time where our immigrant communities are under attack simply for existing, when, when our immigrants are the foundation of everything that we do and all success. In fact, I would love to see some of those people who claim that their jobs were stolen, take to the fields and farm themselves. Guaranteed, they wouldn't even last an hour. But all of our labor and all of our success is built upon the backs of the communities that come here seeking a better life. And, and doing so give more to us than they give to themselves. It is especially important now to champion and to speak out and to be there and to include and to, to include our immigrant populations and to make sure that we are using our platforms and our voices to tell the stories of those who are too afraid or intimidated out of telling their own. So I thank you all for being here. I thank you for the life-saving work that you are doing. And I stand alongside my colleague in making, and the dedication that we will do everything that we can to continue to support and Council President, to continue to support the immigrant populations that contribute so much to our city and to our country. So thank you all.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jaime Rangel and I'm the Regional Government Relations Director at Forward.us. We are a bipartisan organization working to reform our nation's immigration and criminal justice systems. I want to thank President Doug Shipman and members of the Atlanta City Council for issuing this proclamation, recognizing June as Immigrant Heritage Month, also referred to as IHM. I also want to take time to recognize and thank the Mayor's Office of International Immigrant Affairs, Welcoming Atlanta, along with our partners here on stage, who, by the way, many of them could not be here unfortunately, who work, who are working diligently lately to provide services and advocate alongside our elected officials to promote friendly immigrant policies. IHM is a nationwide effort that takes place in June each year to gather and share inspirational stories of immigrants and the unique diverse heritage of millions of people across the country. Spearheaded by the I Stand With Immigrant Campaign by Forward.us, this year marks 12 years sharing the diversity that forms American's unique story. The Atlanta immigrant community brings immense value to our state's culture and economy. We all have witnessed the contributions of immigrants, as well, all indulged in the city's amazing cuisine. We've seen our skyscrapers reach for the heavens. We've seen the contributions of immigrants when we root for our sports teams. We've seen the contributions of immigrants when we go visit our hospitals. And as there's an, and the immigrant contribution here in Atlanta is vital to every sector. There's an estimate, 1 million immigrants living in the Atlanta metro area, collectively having 39.2 billion in annual spending power and paying 12.6 billion in combined taxes. And that's just in the metro Atlanta area. While we reflect and celebrate Atlanta's immigrant community this month, I also want to remind you all of the work that still lies ahead. I want to assure the great people of this city that despite any challenges that come before us, we will not let, we will not let fear and we will not yield to fear and let anyone, anyone undermine the values that make us the capital of the South. Everyone on this stage will remain committed to working alongside our leaders to ensure that our city remains strong and prosperous for anyone seeking a better tomorrow. Thank you so much, Councilman Doug Shipman, members of the City Council, Mayor Andrew Dickens, for all the work y'all are doing. We're here to be a resource and God bless y'all, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jean-Luc Rivera and I'm the Deputy Executive Director of Latino Community Fund, Georgia. I just want to take this time to thank City Council and President Shipman for honoring immigrants during Immigrant Heritage Month with this proclamation. And also for the partnership we have with the Mayor's Office of International Immigrant Affairs. It's an honor to work with you all every day to support all our new arrivals with all the work that we do through the Welcoming Atlanta program. So just thank you all for this recognition, it means the world. And we will keep fighting for immigrants.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eli Velez and represent the Latin America Association. And the Latin America Association want to thank you, the city of Atlanta, for the support that provided to the immigrant community. And we want to say that we are here to continue providing services to the immigrant community and the kids that they are US citizens, you know. We want to recognize the value of the contributions of the Latino community and the immigrant community. And we want to thank the city of Atlanta for the support that you provided to us as a community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our proclamations for today. We'll now move on to public comment. I do not believe we have any elected officials that'll join us that have signed up for public comment. So we will move on to our first public commenter, Ms. Henri Jordan.
May he praise the Lord. He make his enemies to be at peace with him. Proverbs 16, chapter 7, verse. Wisdom praises in the first person. Her own moral, marital, moral excellence apart from being, apart from wisdom. To seek to obey Jesus appears to be a curse, but is a blessing. Be not deceived, God's not mock. What of a man so as actually also wreak. Revelation 6, chapter 7, verse. Mock, outwitted, to disobey God's command and then escape divine punishment will be to outwit God, thus making a mockery of him and his word. You seek to treat me like a dog, but Jesus disagrees. James' swift actions told Jesus, he don't desire to be a Christ-like husband. Whoso digger the pit shall fall therein. And he that rolleth a stone, it will return upon him. Proverbs 26, chapter 27, verse. The wicked is snared in the work of his own hands. Why, it is said today, if ye will hear his voice, harden not your hearts. As in the provocation, Hebrews 3, chapter 15, verse. First the people offer a hymn that serves as a call to worship and prayer. Then the priests or prophet answers with a warning that he, that the worshippers must not fall prey to heart that is apart, as did their ancestors. Satan is not bigger than Jesus, it is a trust and an appearance. But we want the power to disobey Satan, the power to obey our Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you and obey Jesus.
We do have a former council member and state representative, Abel Mabel Thomas.
Testing, one, two, three. Okay, good. First, given the honor of God, who's the leader of my life, it's an honor to be with family because I do consider myself as a part of the alumni of the Atlanta City Council. And I do appreciate the work you do. I know it is not easy work, but it's H-E-A-R-T, heart work, and continue to serve with your heart so that the people of Atlanta will prosper and be saved. I come today to talk to you about an issue that is egregious and I want relief from yourselves and the networks that you have. We were called to a meeting at the middle of April by Southern Company, Georgia Power. And they said to the community, we are going to put a second substation, electromagnetic substation in your area. We already got one. So we would be the only little area in Georgia probably that got two substations. We don't want it. We say, get back, we don't want it. We don't want it. And so we asked the question, how long have you been working on this situation? And they say, two years. For two years they had been working and never brought it to the community. And they said to us, on June 5th, we will have a groundbreaking. Now that's how they came to the community. And so we know it is a health hazard for our children. Anybody who know the area on North Side Drive know that Bethelm Elementary School used to be there and there's a gifted school there. So that's two blocks away. They know that this area is not the area that they're trying to provide electricity to. Everybody knows it's the Gooch and Centennial Yards with about 50 acres. So what we say is, why not put it at Centennial Yards or the Gooch? If it's going to go underground, put it underground there. We don't want to be, even if they talking about putting something underground, we don't want it. Pick another neighborhood. But everybody should be able to fight back because it's not a slap in the face of English Avenue in Vine City. It's a slap in the face of the whole city for corporate conglomerates to treat our community the way that they do when they had ample time. So now I'm not going to organize a process. I've been in politics too long to organize a process. They did us wrong. But what we want now is remedy. And the remedy is pick another site. Move, but stop trying to kill off poor and working-class people throughout this city. Give us a chance to live and prosper as everyone else. And who wants to live in a neighborhood with two substations? You know, that's ridiculous. And if you would, Steven Mohammed is from Vine City Civic Association and I'd like him to say just a teachment of words.
Thank you, Mabel, but you, you said enough.
I'll say more about health and soil contamination.
Well, the soil contamination and you're going to put a power, two power stations and a school, our babies in between, that's egregious. That's absolutely horrible. And we know that Georgia Power with their schoolyard bully boy tactics, where they push people around, they run this, a public service commission. It's, it's very difficult to deal with them, but we are going to challenge them. David and Goliath is a biblical prophetic story that applies to this situation. You have Mabel, who was served on this council, who has served this city very well. And she has to get up, out of her bed, out of her new home that was just renovated, to come fight. Now we're having another protest Thursday, Juneteenth. Every two weeks, we're going to come out and we're going to come after Georgia Power and we have other remedies that we're going to do also. But we're saying that we need your help. We know it goes to the Gooch. The Gooch can't get any money without this council. The Gooch can't get any money without the mayor and this council. We're saying, tell the Gooch to take it over there, you're not going to give them that 1.9 billion. This is an election year. It's 1.9 billion involved with the Gooch. We know that two acres for a power station represents 100 million, it's a $5 billion project. That's 100 million per acre. That's $200 million times 10 exponentially, that's a $2 billion potential. We understand that. Georgia Power is looking at making millions of dollars on lights. We understand the economics of it, take it over there and they deal with it. Georgia, Vine City is not going to benefit off those billions. So why is it being put in Vine City? We feel it needs to go where it's going to benefit those people, those people, and let it stay there. Thank you.
So we have a campaign called G-PAC, Georgia Power Accountability Campaign. Georgia Power must be accountable. Let's hold Georgia Power accountable. Six, I think six rate hikes since 2003. And they were asking for one for January of '26. But I think that they, the public service may have done something positive and I think they made the delay on that one. But six rate hikes on our bills since 2023, that's enough. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I'll leave this up here.
Joel Stevens.
Nice, I thought y'all might have skipped me. I was looking for Shipman on the screen out there. Oh, I got four?
It's not, it's not indicated that he has four minutes. He should have the regular two minutes, I'm not. two minutes, I'm not.
All right, anyway.
Just one second while we restart the block. Okay, go ahead.
Oh yeah, thanks. I was just, in the time since I had been up here last, I was keeping my eye on the case of Devin Anderson, and I was wondering if specifically you, Mr. Lewis, might have any insight on to what the holdup would be with having that case move forward. I spoke with her a minute ago outside, and I know in previous instances, it would just seem like a case that might move a little faster, and I was wondering if there was any reason why charges would not have been brought at this point to Melvin Potter for, for the murder of her son? And I just had that question, and that was why I showed up today, so thank you for your time.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you for, for addressing me and pointed directly at me. Mrs. Anderson and I would talk all the time. I think what she was talking to me about today was about our conversations that we have, about why the case isn't moving forth, and I was telling her about some more cases that are moving the same exact way. And so, I've been the advocate, making sure to ask all of the questions that she needs me to ask. I've tried to be her entire voice. I've asked her to act out, she can use my voice, not try to be her voice, I tried to let her use my voice. And I know also, our Public Safety Committee has also been moving forward with her as well, so I truly appreciate you for advocating for this, and I know you overheard a little bit of the conversation, but that was me making sure that she can use my voice. But thank you again. And the folks that you, to answer your question, the, she...
I didn't hear anything you said, I was just following the news, I saw like back in May, there was an article, but...
Mr. Stevens, this is not a back and forth, you have done with your time, and Councilmember Lewis, I believe is now done. Correct? Okay, thank you. Next is Akeem Williams.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Akeem Williams, I'm a business major at Morris Brown College with a 3.9 GPA, and a proud voice of Atlanta's West Side. I'm here to strongly support the Trails ATL Plan. Right now, only about 40% of Atlantans live within a 10-mile walk of a Safe Trail. And this plan set forth will put 94% of residents within a 10-minute walk in of a trail by 2052. That's assets, that's equity, that's real opportunity for every part of the city. I want to give a big shout out to Eric with the Powell Foundation for continuous support to 327 miles of trails and help bring in over $444 in total investments, and also just being able to, you know, push this project along. I would also like to say, thank you to the Community Human Services Committee for also pushing this through committee last week, that was a major stride. And yeah, I'm all in support for the Trails ATL Plan. While I have a little bit more time, I would also like to say something about Georgia Power. A lot of residents on the West Side are becoming what they've known as energy burden, and with energy burden, I think it is time for, I know it's not y'all's job, it's the Public Service Commission to hold them accountable, but to be a little bit more vocal with the Public Service Commission and let them know like, our residents are being impacted by your lack of regulation with the utility provider. They're running like it's monopoly, and so we're just asking for a little support, specifically over in Vine City, where when we went to the community engagement meeting, every executive person they had at the meeting said that they would not live near this substation bill, so make sure that we get something out of this deal, ask community members. Thank you.
Next is Dr. Juan Robinson, you'll have 10 minutes due to allocated time.
Good afternoon. Afternoon, council. Oftentimes, we take things for granted like life, so I try to be grateful and move in love more often around my birthday. So oftentimes, I come down here talking about the things that's going on, I'm in a city that could be wrong or could be fixed. So for today, I'm gonna take a different approach. I would like to start off by thinking, all who work hard, and all who are across my path at City Hall, start on the first floor with special events. Aaron, thank you for all your help. First floor watershed department, thank you for everything and always making sure that our seniors and all the citizens of Atlanta move fast and make sure they get the help that they seek. Planning Department, Rashine, Lillaroo, thank you for all your help. The entire finance department, I don't wanna call each and every last one of you, but thank you. Constituent service on the grid, Clay, thank you. Ramondo Davis for Midnight League Basketball, thank you. Ashley and Sandra for ticketing for nonprofits, thank you for all you do. All of the procurement department, thank you for always making sure that the vendors who wanna get help and wanna contract with the city are helped and treated with respect. Thank you. Second floor, I would like to thank our mayor, and I would like to think that this administration has been more, most accessible than any administration I paid attention to since I've been down here at City Hall. No matter what I've said or what I've done, whether or not the administration agree or not, I do thank you guys for open access. Lashandra Burks, thank you. Peter Ammon, thank you. D.O. Pace, thank you for all your work and all your conversations, whether or not you wanna have them or not. Courtney English, I thank you for always willing to talk and at least try to make amends on whether you want to or not. My friend, my Douglas High alumni, our chief of staff, Odie Donald. I personally would miss you, brother. I don't think most people understand how hard the chief of staff work is, I will miss you. I wish you much success in your next endeavor. It have made me proud, man, to watch you online, working out and get your strength back and being able to walk, man, where your kids can really enjoy a quality of life with you. Amber Diggs, who also work in the mayor's office in the alcohol department, I appreciate every email, I appreciate every returned phone call, I really thank you. Mellie Mail and Bridget at the front desk and council office, I thank you so much. Mr. Julian Bond, Councilman Amos, Councilman Lewis, and Councilman Boone, your whole staff, who I normally work with and try to get things done, I thank you. Santana and your whole entire staff, I thank you. Ms. Corinne and the whole clerk staff, I thank you. Shawn Brown, I thank you a lot, brother, for all your hard work and everything that you do, and your whole staff. Moving on to the third floor, Ms. Kenyatta Holmes and your entire staff in zone, and I thank you so much for answering all my questions, even I get on y'all nerves with all my questions and my projects, I thank you. Ms. Jubie Thompson, I thank you. Greg Pace and your whole teams in building, I know things start out a little rocky, I sure appreciate you. Megan and Courtney, I appreciate you guys so much for always returning emails, even if I come up there at 4:45 PM on a payday Friday, y'all still stay and make sure that you answer everything you have, so I thank you. Congrats to another Douglas High alumni, Mr. Calvin Blackburn, well deserved, man, as the new commissioner of HR, thank you. April Weeks, Kim Finley, Mike Morning, thank you guys for loving employees and loving Atlanta. Commissioner Garment in Public Works, thank you so much, man. Chris Davis and the dean staff, and especially my brothers downstairs who work hard setting up at City Hall all the time, thank you. And to my brother, I know he probably not listening, my Asian brother that clean City Hall and do a tremendous job, I thank whoever gave him that job, I really thank you for that, because he take pride in his work, I thank you. To our DOT staff and everybody up there that making these projects work, even though sometimes seem like it's taking a little longer than others, we still have the people behind the scene that work hard. Mr. Keith Hillsman and Calvin, thank you. And the whole legislative team up there, thank you guys doing a great job. CFO Baller and your team, and Yolanda Carr, thank you guys so much. And our city attorney, Ms. Patrice, I thank you so much for answering questions as best as you can from a legal standpoint, I thank you so much. My guy, Al Wiggins, Mr. Do everything and try to help everyone if he can, I thank you so much, man, for everything that you do. And last but not least, the city employees, those who keep the exterior and the interior clean, those who work on the back of the garbage trucks, in a time where we have social media, where people can make fun of you and taking videos, you are up early taking pride in your work, because no city can live with trash all on the streets and our water not working properly, so thank you. So I want to give a special shout out to Councilman Amir Farroki, who I know stepped out in here. He created this thing called In Her Hands, something that I found that's very profound to help black women secure housing and take away that burden and being able to find jobs. I think that was so important that he don't boast about it, he don't brag about it, I had to find out from a woman who live in this district, man, so I had to find that out. So I thank you for that, Mr. Councilman Farroki, and I do wish you great endeavors in your next term in life. And I noticed today, we have Councilman Hillis serving as the president, so that mean Mr. Shipman have been out sometimes, so I wish you, I hope your wife doing well and whatever's going on with your family, I wish you well, man, because I noticed your absence, so I just wanna make sure that I don't forget that if you're not. And for all the fathers in the building and on council, Happy belated Father's Day from yesterday. As I leave and take a 14-day trip, man, I just wanna say, hey, no matter how much I come down here, man, I do move in love and I do appreciate you guys, because I'm somebody that can respect, honest, know, I respect each time I pull you guys to the side and you speak and answer the question whether you want to or not and try to help as best as you can. Oftentimes, I think overall, we've done a bad job from a city standpoint, as to really making sure that people understand the functions of the city. Sometimes, we ask questions and you guys, you know what I'm saying, it's not your job, you know what I'm saying, but you still try to do it, and it's other people's job, that we think it's city council job or the mayor, you know what I'm saying, or whomever, but you guys do a great job in trying to facilitate that, like oftentimes, even employees. You guys don't get in the business of speaking on employees behalf, getting in advance, but you guys can ask questions, but it's not your job. And oftentimes, I think certain people put their hands in it, and the public think it's council job, and actually it's not. And so, today, you know, I just wanted to just come give you guys appreciation and love, because tomorrow's not promised, and though I wanna be someone known to fight for people, I also wanna be someone that move in love and respect people, because that's the principle that I live on. And so I just wanna leave here today and say, thank you guys and well wishes, because I know you guys are, what, taken off sometime in July? Yep, so well wishes and Godspeed.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Next is Valerie Anderson, due to allocated time, you have eight minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to see that if there's any information on the murder of my son, Devon Anderson, from Atlanta Police Officer Melvin Potter. It's been 10 months, and I haven't heard anything about why Melvin Potter, who was on probation for DUI, murdered my son. Now, Ms. Collins and Matt Westmoreland, I'll be speaking with you or addressing you for the first time, and like I said, Ms. Collins, I enjoyed our conversation we had when you met me. I wanted you to look into as to why only now Post is investigating Melvin Potter. Melvin Potter murdered my son 10 months ago, and as far as I was told, he was supposed to be investigated at the time of the murder, and that has not happened, which he also did not report to his probation officer. So again, why is Melvin Potter keep getting away with whatever he choose to do? Because he murdered my son, Fulton County arrested him, and they allowed him to choose not to take a blood draw. They allowed that, because if it was someone else, they would have been arrested for murder. So how do he get to choose that he's not taking a blood draw and got charged with obstruction after you just murdered my son? So yes, I need to know why this dysfunctional, ineffective system, like I said before, that I have to rely on, is not doing the job? Because first up, if APD had did their job, Melvin Potter should have been fired a long time ago. A long time ago, Melvin Potter should have been fired, and my son would have been alive today if they had did their job. But they let him get away with everything, his record, his excessive force, his abuse, DUIs, you name it. And Kawhi County stepped in and did their job, why we have a DUI conviction on him for 36 months. And like I said, he was on probation when he murdered my son. And you're telling me he's still home collecting a check? If my son murdered him, and like I said, I'm always going to say this, if, if, if it was my son that murdered him, my son would have been dragged to jail if they didn't kill his ass before he got to jail. And that's a fact. So why is Melvin Potter being treated differently than any, any one of us, if we, any one of us in here, police pulled us over for a DUI, we were going to jail. We were going to jail. So why is the drunk policing us? Why is Post not policing them, but they're out here drunk policing us? I need answers. It'll be 10 months I lost my son to murdering Melvin Potter, lawless drunk murdering my son. And not a goddamn thing has happened, because all I know is, Melvin Potter was the one who murdered my son, because he said so. 10 months in, so in two months, I would have lost my son. Lost my son, and I still don't know why. Up to this day, I still don't know why. APD has not reached out to me, the District Attorney Office, Fonny Willis, has not reached out to me. So am I, like Mr. Lewis had stated one time, am I supposed to be my own Sherlock Holmes person? Because I had to do a whole lot to get the GBI to talk to me. Am I not suffering enough? It's so goddamn disrespectful how this city treats the victims of murder. It's disrespectful that I lost my son, and the system act like I rented my son out to them. I did not rent my son out to the goddamn city, okay? I did not rent my son out to the city. Melvin Potter took my son from me, he murdered my son, and then I got to deal with this bullshit, with the city not telling me nothing? I got to be begging, or feel like I am, to find out what the hell happened to my son? Am I not suffering enough? What the hell more you all want me to do? When I say I am frustrated, you all can't even understand how frustrated I am. As a mother, and, and let me say, thank you to all the folks, men and women who walks up to me, some pray with me, you know, and some just talk to me, that means a lot. Strangers come up to me and say, Ms. Anderson, stay strong. Stay strong, Ms. Anderson, stay strong and keep the fight up. And I wanna thank those people. The last time I was, I was here, when I said, I didn't get that kiss, and I didn't get the hug on Mother's Day, which Mother's Day was my son's birthday. And I was... And I was, and as I was leaving, a young man hugged me twice and said, Happy Mother's Day, ma'am. Happy Mother's Day. So, it's just not men and women. It's all of us. You know what I'm saying? It takes a village. It takes a village. My son should not have died the way he did. My son should not have been murdered by a lawless drunk officer who APD is covering his ass because he has gotten away with so much. And if it was my son, he would not gotten away with none of it. None of it he would have gotten away with. So, and then when you have some lawless executive, Chris Harvey, saying that no police is above the law. But, you know, people normally do get DUIs. I don't normally get DUIs because I'm a responsible person and I know that I could run the risk of killing someone while I'm out there drinking and driving. And I guess evidently murdering Melvin don't know that. Okay? But if I get caught out there drunk, what's going to happen to me? They're going to take me to jail. And if I refuse a blood draw, I might be dropped on the goddamn ground and beat up too. What is wrong with you all not holding accountable these police officers? But like I said, over and over and over again, I'm not going anywhere until I get justice for my son. I don't give a damn how long it takes. Do your job that the people put you all in there to do. You understand? You all work for your constituents.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I complete your time.
Ms. Collins and Ms. Westmoreland, would you care to address anything that I have to say as far as asking for your help in finding out why Post is not, only not investigating Melvin Potter and why he wasn't investigated before?
Yeah, I don't mind replying at all. I mean, what I could do is find a status for you. What I shared with you before is when you do have officer-involved shootings, the GBI investigates, investigate those matters and it's currently in Fulton County, which we don't have jurisdiction over. But what we can do is connect with Chief Sheerbaum to see in terms of what they can disclose on the investigation. Like I shared with you before, you want this, you as the victim's mother, you want this investigation to be not only as thoroughly as possible, but you also want them to do the deep dive into history that is public. Like, so we all know that this, I mean, it's 11 Live News is covering it. It's in the newspapers. So, I will do my best to see as much information that I can get to communicate with you without tainting this investigation on your behalf. And so, as your city council, as your city council representative, again, but I don't want, again, as I always state, I do not want you to think, take our silence as if it's an ascent or we are taking sides or anything. So, I do appreciate you offering this opportunity for us to reply. But I know on my end, and this is just coming from me as a former defense attorney, I will connect with, I will see what we can get that is public enough to honestly not taint this investigation. You want this done right because the last thing you want to happen is he get into court. And if any piece of this investigation has been tainted with, he can possibly also get this dismissed under fruits of a poisonous tree. So, you want to be very, 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 very careful and let the key entities do their investigation, not only to make sure it's done right, but also to make sure this is served on your behalf for your son. So, I do want to say that.
Well, I do appreciate you. And you're right, I want a thorough investigation, but I also want to know that what is being done? Can you, Ms. Collins?
Ms. Anderson, your time has been completed, Ms. Anderson.
You, as a mother, you supposed to reach out to me. I need to say something to the bishop. Something to me in 10 months. I have no, you understand me, Ms. Westmoreland? No one what happened to my son 10 months. I always said, but I can't understand what everything above and above. You understand what I'm saying? But where is the respect for me as his mother? Where is respect? It's disrespectful, like I said, that no one should reach out to me. I am his mother. He has a mother, a father, and family. So, that's why I'm talking about the disrespect.
Next is Nikki Bugs. Due to allocated time, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon. I am going to start off playing something for you and then I'll commence to what I came here for today. I live at the landmark. I stand before you again about the same manner we've been talking about for over three years now. The same matter. We have predatory property investors that have taken over our building in its entirety. What you just heard was a party that was taking place in our building at 11:30 last night. 11:30 last night. The police eventually showed up at 3:30. It was louder, it was more cantankerous than what that was. This is what we're dealing with in conjunction with the flood that took place in the building yesterday. Yesterday evening. None of the investors that are on the board or employees came back to the building because they don't live in the building. Something else I'd like to show you. This is what we deal with with investor, people that come in for Airbnb that stay in the building, ringing our doorbells, knocking on our doors. This was emailed to you. No reply from anybody, though. Inside of this envelope are xenophobic photos that were sent to us. I will leave this with you. I will not show this on camera because it's disturbing, but I will leave it with you. You do have it on email as well. This is what we deal with. No one has done anything yet. We're unclear what else we need to do to get you to step up. We just need to know. We just need to know. We have very few homeowners left. These people have your carte blanche to do what they're doing. Now, they're setting up to file liens on people's property. And nobody's there to help us. Now, if I showed up and with a gun and I shot off the place, I would have your attention, right? I would. I absolutely would. When my taxes are due, you have no problem finding me to get those taxes paid, correct? Let's have a conversation. Let's talk about it. You see, because if you're permitting these people to come in and single-handedly take our homes, my generation that I could pass on to my kids and so forth, we don't have that anymore because no one's stepping up to say anything or do anything. The state's pointing at you, you're pointing at the state and then the police officers, everybody's passing the buck. We don't deserve this. We don't. It was a community. It was a great community. We don't have anyone to stand up for us. If I get injured, I become incapacitated, I disappear, I die fighting this cause with these people. Please know what is in this envelope, you will have a full handle on what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Next is Costco Jones. Due to allocated time, you have four minutes.
Hey, Bob. I'm going to let him hand that out before I start talking.
The clock is running, so if you want to dig into your time, you may.
How did it start running if I didn't start talking?
Time starts when you get to the podium, so please proceed.
Okay. God don't like ugly, I'll say that first. Happy Belated Father's Day. Thank you for having me up here. I'm distributing a document, but while that document's being distributed, I'm here actually representing the Building Performance Association, National Contractors Advisory Board. I'm on a few other advisory boards too, but I'm going to speak on that one right now. I'm an energy auditor. As we know, Atlanta has been dealing with a lot of energy burden, things of that nature. People are having a hard time affording their homes. And I'm trying to find a way to help mitigate this problem, bringing forth a potential policy from an ordinance standpoint that should be actually picked up. I'm going to let y'all read the whereas's, but I want to go to the back and I just want to read some parts. I'm going to start with section two. So, section two, energy audit is a parallel pathway to a real estate inspection. Residential properties within the City of Atlanta should undergo an energy audit in lieu of or in addition to a traditional real estate inspection at point of sale. Now, what that would do is help people to qualify for the IRA tax credits as well as the GFO program, which is in pilot, will help get some validity behind that so that that program could be adopted more vigorously to help the people that are within the 80% AMIs go ahead and take advantage of their, take advantage of these programs that have come down from the federal level as well as whenever the weather rise program rolls back out, they will be able to participate in that as well. Let's see, it was going down to section three, compliance and reporting. Buyers can, basically when they buy a home, they get an energy audit before they close the home. A lot of people don't know this, but if you're purchasing a home through a 203K, which is a way of purchasing a home where you wrap the renovation costs into the actual, into the mortgage, you can actually take advantage of the IRA tax credits during that purchase. So, that would help a homeowner or someone that's purchasing a home when they're moving into the home. The point of them getting an audit before they move into the home is so that it's involved in the decision-making. People are 60% more likely to do a project on their home when they're first moving into a home. So, let's say if they're doing their kitchen, whereas the real estate inspection would simply say that the dishwasher, the oven and all of those things are working, the energy audit will also say that in that kitchen, they need to make sure that the kitchen is exhausting to the outside, the cabinets are not basically giving off volatile organic compounds. And if it's on the exterior wall, there would be aerosol opportunities as well to help with the building envelope. The building envelope is typically the first thing that you deal with from a building science perspective as far as reducing energy bills. There's a labor shortage. We all know about the skilled labor shortage and the labor shortage with skilled labor as far as electricians, plumbers, things of that nature. It's the same thing with energy auditors as well. So, I bought a draft up here, a full draft. I'm just looking for a sponsor. I'm looking for a sponsor. So, we're going to, that's all I wanted to do and thank you for your time.
Councilman Blowers.
And we did get your draft. I reached out to the attorneys right now. So, they're going to be looking into this to see if this is something we have to see if it's viable and see if it's something we can do. But I truly appreciate you for taking this effort. I can see the intention. I can tell that this is your wheelhouse.
Yeah, I understand that the city controls the certificate of occupancy. So, that's something that you do have power over. And I do also understand that when you're doing the down payment assistance program through Invest Atlanta, the inspection is required then. So, that's an easier way to go ahead and roll out a pilot program. I understand there's no back and forth. I just wanted to say that, Mr. Hillis. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Jones. Excuse me, ma'am? Okay, what is your last name? Brooks, Kimberly Brooks. Thank you.
Being safe, sanctified, holy ghost, pure fire, baptized, as Pentecostal. And I come to you today because you got second oath on a Bible that you swore. That oath is not to me, it is not to the city, but it is to God. And it goes something similar to the thought process of we, the people of the United States, in order to perform a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote justice and welfare and security of blessings of liberty, do undertake and establish the Constitution of the United States, of the Georgia Constitution of the State of Georgia, of the council and ordinances and powers that grant you the powers that be, yet you continuously come before the people and do not act in the good faith of democracy, which makes me question your ability to perform your duties as council. As I look at affordable housing, idealizing that the nonprofit school system is selling black kids to the private sector. We're going to say ordinance 25.0-13-13, number five, 25-0-344, 25-01346, 25-01331, 25-01332, 25-0-1325, the taking method of OCGA 32.31, of being able to take people's properties from them wrongfully. So, we sung songs today about the civil rights. We sung songs, things like that. The State of Georgia terminated me from my job two months ago for doing my job. And they don't understand that I am a child of God. I will always do the work. So, now I have time for you, all the time for you that I need. Councilman Barty, I just want to thank you for the services you've ever rendered. You are the epitome of what council should be. If anyone comes to this council and says anything to you, despite the doctorate degrees they say they have from a peanut butter and jelly college because my credits are fully accredited from the degrees that I have, please know that that black community does not speak for the black community that I serve. God bless you all.
Next is Chet Tisdale. Due to allocated time, you have six minutes.
Clearcutting developers are killing Atlanta's best trees. They're destroying Atlanta's brand as the city in the forest. They're creating a tree loss crisis. And we learned recently that the clearcutting is contributing to a serious air pollution health problem. I mean, focus on that a minute. Last year, the American Lung Association gave Atlanta a C for ground level ozone pollution. This year, we have an F already and we haven't entered the really hot days in July and August where ozone levels will go even higher. Ground level ozone is a serious health threat to our children and to the elderly and all of us. We also have a failing grade for particle pollution. Again, a serious health threat to children, to the elderly and to everyone. So, we have an air pollution problem in addition to a tree loss crisis. And what can be done? This city council has a duty to act in the face of an environmental crisis and an air pollution health crisis, to take action to address that. When the Coyoacoula River caught fire in Ohio in the late 60s several times, public outcry resulted in Congress passing the Clean Water Act, probably the best environmental law ever passed. You have the power. We have a lot of TPOs out there. The January 2025 TPO is the result of four years of negotiations. It's a very good tree protection ordinance. It could be used. Let me go back a second. The 2001 Tree Protection Ordinance does not protect trees. It protects developers who clearcut and pay a small amount of recompense. The June 10th TPO that Janey Prince presented last week does not protect trees. It again enables developers to clearcut. This time, they have to pay more recompense. They can still clearcut. What is missing? An essential element in any tree protection ordinance are provisions that protect trees. And we call it a tree preservation standard. There's a very good tree preservation standard in the January 2025 TPO, approved by the Law Department, reviewed by the NPUs. It grants the owner or the developer the right to build, to cut down the trees that need to be cut down. And the only thing that it restricts is the ability to clearcut. But that's very important. We need to end clearcutting on single-family residential properties. And we need to take action now. How do we get this done? On the federal level, the state level? On the federal level, the state level, which I'm more familiar with, what happens when a governmental agency doesn't respond to an emergency? Someone files a lawsuit. That's happened, and it'll happen again. I got sued by Adam Brock. He needed to sue me because the tree commission had made a decision that needed some attention. And we're friends. It didn't bother me at all. And it led to a working out of resolution for Adam Brock and Brock built homes. I'm happy to be sued if it's for a good purpose. And it may come down to someone having to take action against y'all. I would hate for that to happen because I think, I know you are good. You care about this city, and you can take action, but you've got to take action. Janey Prince says the tree preservation standard needs to be tested. It has been tested by David Zapparannick and Andrew Walter. She says it might conflict with the zoning ordinance. I assure you, it will not. I'm a good enough lawyer to make that judgment. If there is a problem, it can be fixed. You need to pass a tree protection ordinance with a tree preservation standards to address our clearcutting crisis and to address the ozone pollution and the particle pollution, which threaten the health of our children, our citizens, our adults who are elderly. I watched some children play yesterday afternoon with their mothers and wondered if they knew they were being exposed to unsafe levels of ozone and particle pollution. We've got to do something about this. On the federal level, on the state level, which is where I'm most familiar, when we have a crisis, we take action. When we found that people were dumping hazardous waste into the ground, contaminating soil and groundwater, we passed the comprehensive superfund law. You have the power to do it. People ask me, "Chet, you've been working on this a long time. Can you do anything?" My answer is only the city council and the mayor can. And I don't think the mayor wants to be known as the clearcutting mayor. But the June ten TPO that was proposed last week would foster clearcutting. I know you don't want to be viewed as the clearcutting city council, and you have the power to take action. It's time to recognize we have a tree loss crisis. We have an emergency with respect to air pollution and the health of our citizens. We've been at this too long. I've only been at it five years. Some people here have been here ten years longer than that. Madison Whirlin's been there longer than I have. And it is time for us to take action. It should not be put over to another council. I know that many of you said, have said you wanna get something done, and you can. It's not the June ten ordinance. That would not be an accomplishment. That would be an embarrassment. But you have the power. You have the January twenty-twenty-five tree protection ordinance in front of you that was negotiated with everybody involved. My friend Michael Paris was there. And it is time for this action to be taken by this city council. Take the January twenty-twenty-five one, or take another one and add the very good tree preservation standard. It will address our tree loss crisis. It would help with our health crisis. It needs to be done now. We don't need to delay it. We don't need to put it off to another city council. Thank you.
Next is Mindy Boggs.
Good afternoon. Um, I have two minutes. Okay. It's been bugging here while I've been waiting. Um, I have a personal statement that I would like to give to everyone here on the council. But just from my heart, I wanna say that I've been working on getting, with so many people. And so, I really feel like I'm speaking on behalf of friends, colleagues, and their families, my family, who have been working and hoping that the city council would pass a real, meaningful tree protection ordinance. And I've been doing this for eight years, and other people here have been doing it longer. And it was alarming to hear that pressure's been put on the mayor and also city council members to do nothing, to go backward, to go, you know, where there's just zero, um, protection and clearcutting. And as Mr. Tisdale was explaining, the science and the facts behind this, you know, it's harmful to everyone when this happens. Our health, our well-being, the city, it causes flooding, it causes erosion. Our tree canopy, people don't understand how important it is. And when you talk about storm water management, saving our trees are part of that. So, I just hope that today, today, you will make the difference for now and for the future of the people of this city and pass a meaningful tree ordinance today. Thank you.
Next is Delil Anthony.
Hi, my name is Delil Anthony, and I've been up here many times before. I am one of those people who have actually been at this, working on a new tree ordinance for fifteen years. I don't wanna spend another fifteen years. I don't have that much of life left, to be quite honest. Um, I understand that there was a new ordinance that was dropped today around eleven o'clock. I had a very brief moment to look at it. It looks like there were some marginal improvements made to that ordinance compared to the June tenth one, but it still doesn't go far enough. However, I'm aware that the plan is to go ahead and pass this ordinance today. So, I'm going to ask you for several things. One is, I want a commitment from city council that this is not the end of the road, that you will be taking this testing and integrating it with the two-point-oh zoning ordinance seriously, that there will be tracking and monitoring of how that's going, and that there will be a date in which we will have a phase-three ordinance passed with tree preservation standards in there. Otherwise, just like Chet and Mindy said before me, we've really got nothing here other than increased recompense rate, which is only fifty percent of where it needs to be to fully fund what we are taking down. The other thing that I would like to have is tracking on what we are spending on the fourteen-and-a-half salaries that are now gonna be coming out of the tree trust fund so that we are not actually spending less on tree replanting going forward. And finally, I'd like to ask that this ordinance that passed today be made effective immediately. You all made effective immediately the ordinance you passed to exempt city public infrastructure projects from the tree ordinance. There's no reason we can't make this effective immediately, so we start collecting the higher recompense immediately. Otherwise, we're gonna go another seven months at thirty dollars per inch, and that's despicable. Thank you.
David Mitchell.
I follow this number twenty-nine, but I'm good. I'll take it. You wanna set me up here? Cause I wanna make sure I'm doing it correct. All right. My name is David Yopton Mitchell. I'm the executive director of the Atlanta Preservation Center. I'm here to speak to you on ordinance twenty-five dash zero dash thirteen forty. This, of course, is the sky bridge. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you off the bat that we'll be the only state in the entire country that has a sky bridge on our Capitol. We will have something that makes us look like a shopping mall on our Capitol for eternity. You have a chance today to grant perpetual permission for us to have a shopping mall as the representative of our Capitol. Um, the next thing is, will be forty days a year, forty days a year is what you're giving this to. It deforms, it mallefs our Capitol building. And the next thing will be, the Georgia Capitol is one of the few remaining buildings of the Capitol Hill neighborhood. The Capitol Hill neighborhood is an Atlanta neighborhood and struggles to keep its significance as it is constantly working, punching a hole in the side of this building. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional. I'm just drained. This whole thing is, the transportation committee last week did something noble and courageous, and it put this thing on a table and said, "Let's stop. Let's look at this thing. Let's have a better discussion. Let's approach this differently." But now, here we are. There was an old saying, "Two wolves, a lamb, no which for dinner." And I can tell you right now, if it smells like it, it looks like it, it is it. This is a moment for you to have vision to protect our city, to protect our historic landscape, to respect our historic structure. But most of all, the big thing about it is, represent Atlanta. I'm proud to be the executive director of the Atlanta Preservation Center. I think we're a great city. I think we're one of the, I think we are the best city in the country. I'm proud of it every day. We can do a lot of great and amazing things. We have a great city council. We have a great, uh, situation with this building, with all these different things. And we're about to give perpetual permission to the state of Georgia to have something that makes us look like a shopping mall in perpetuity. We can do better, and I beseech you, don't do a bait and switch. Just let it be good. Represent Atlanta and be proud of it. Thank you.
Next is Garrett Wiley.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Garrett Wiley. I'm the vice president of government affairs for the Greater Atlanta Home Builders. Um, our members are in the business of providing housing options for all Atlannans, including builders that offer affordable housing and builders that offer market-rate housing that is affordable. Um, we believe that this new TPO provides balance. Uh, today, I, you know, I wouldn't chalk it up as a win for the development community, and I wouldn't chalk it up as a loss for the development community. Uh, we've had so many discussions on this, and, um, you know, there's things that we don't like in it. And, um, but at the same time, I've worked through this process with all of you and wanna continue to work through it, um, as we run through the testing phase, um, in zoning two-point-oh. Um, our association believes that tree canopy is vital to our city's identity and our city's environmental objectives. Uh, we wanna continue to work together to build up a tree trust fund, and that includes the two-hundred percent increase in recompense fees in this ordinance. Uh, let's build it up and use all of that money to replant and then do it all over again. Um, we, from the very beginning of this process, there's been nothing but honest and realistic expectations of the communication between, um, the stakeholders and, um, and all of you. Um, and we believe that the time that you've taken is a responsible approach to legislation. And, uh, we look forward to the continued discussion. Passing, um, a piece of legislation with the expectation that you will be sued over it is not responsible. So, we appreciate, uh, the removal of the, um, tree preservation in the previous ordinance. Um, we believe in protecting the rights of homeowners and property owners, and, uh, we look forward to, um, continuing this process again through the testing phase in zoning two-point-oh. Thank you.
Next is Sean Fisher.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is John Fisher. I'm here representing NPUM and the Atlanta Downtown Neighborhood Association. Uh, I'm also here to speak to legislation, uh, twenty-five oh thirteen forty, which I understand is being held in committee. Um, we're here to ask the full council to please reject the sky bridge over MLK at the state Capitol. Um, we currently have sky bridges that have been installed downtown a generation ago that have contributed to the stagnation of growth in the center of the city as it keeps pedestrians off the sidewalks and no activation. Uh, studies have shown that street-level activation helps reduce crime, provides opportunity for small businesses, reduces vacancy rates, and increases property values. The state of Georgia Building Authority claims that with the sky bridge, legislators won't even have to leave the building, and that there's nothing else in the area. Well, obviously, that director has never left the Capitol building because less than two blocks away is Underground Atlanta. The developers of Underground Atlanta in the last two years have spent much time and effort providing opportunities for small minority-owned businesses. Nightlife has thrived, but we're still struggling on Upper Alabama Street with daytime businesses for food and beverage. So, obviously, activation daytime traffic would help there. The city of Atlanta spent tens of millions of dollars to make downtown welcoming to the World Cup and to, uh, participate and patronize local businesses. Should we not ask the same of our state legislature? So, NPUM would please request that we, uh, reject the sky bridge proposal. Thank you.
Matthew Nursey.
Uh, hello. Thank you, council. Um, my name is Matthew Nursey. I am an organizer and policy advocate with the Housing Justice League. Um, I wanted to talk today about the situation at Bolden Town Homes. I know, uh, Councilman Dozier is familiar, um, with what's going on there and, um, continuing to reach out to help, and I appreciate that. And we will, um, of course, you know, work with you and, um, the residents there. But I just wanted to, in case the rest of the council is not aware, which I'm sure you are, um, in the Oakland City West End area, Bolden Town Homes, um, is going through with a mass eviction currently. Um, you know, about seventy percent of the property, um, around forty residents, most of whom have said they've paid their rent. Um, there was a worker in the property management in the leasing office um, that took off with thirty thousand dollars. And I understand that Mr. Bolden is in litigation against that person, but that should not, you know, fall onto, um, the tenants to carry that burden. We have tenants, again, who have said they've paid their rent, have documentation of this, who are being called squatters. Their power's been turned out, off in the middle of the summer, no AC. They can't get access to their mailboxes, water shut off, trash piling up, uh, ceilings caving in, mold, you name it. The works, the place is completely blighted. And this, uh, Mr. Bolden has a history of this. Evidently, city council in twenty-twenty, Joyce Shepherd, um, you know, looked into one of his other properties, and, um, I don't know what came out of that. I couldn't really find, uh, through the articles I was reading. But we need to look into, you know, executing nuisance abatement, you know, putting this into receivership or something. Uh, slum lords need to know that if they are not gonna operate in good faith, the city will seize their property. Thank you.
Michael Paris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Council President Pro Tem and members of the city council. My name is Michael Paris, and I'm president and CEO of the Council for Quality Growth. First, I want to start by thanking the city council and all members of the staff here, especially city, uh, planning, Commissioner Prince, for all the hard work that everyone has put into this tree ordinance over the years. It has been quite a long time. Like everybody says, we're glad to be here today. So, our ask from the beginning of this long process has been simple. Create a balanced policy for the city of Atlanta that recognizes the inherent need to protect tree canopy while valuing the importance of housing and economic development for the city. So, achieving this balance means that everyone still has items on the table. That's what a balance is gonna look like. We all have things we wish was in the ordinance. The development community certainly has those share of those, but we believe this draft reflects the consensus for various interests across the city, and that's what is important. And I've even enjoyed working with my good friend Chet Tisdale all the way through, and in the future will. Included in this substitute is an increase in recompense fees and a significant increase in maximum recompense caps, increases in the maximum penalty for illegal tree removal, and increased arbiters staffing to enforce the ordinance, and the registration of tree service companies across the city. From the beginning, we have argued that meaningful recompense increases, uh, tree service, meaningful recompense increases, tree service registrations, and illegal clearcutting penalty increases will go a long way to address the community concerns around canopy loss. The substitute before you also recognizes the importance of affordable housing and focuses on the low-income senior citizens. So, thank you again for all the hard work you've done, and I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this ordinance. Thank you.
Frankie Elliott.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Frankie Elliott. I'm vice president of government affairs for the Atlanta Commercial Board of Realtors and the Atlanta Realtors Association. I also wanna just echo Michael Paris. I don't wanna take a lot of time. We really appreciate the effort and energy that everyone here on council as well, staff, has put into this issue. This issue, like many others, it's very long. It was very complicated. And I'm not sure anybody walks out of that feeling great about what we've come up with, but I do believe it's the best version that we could do right now. It does still protect trees. It does increase the recompense fund, which will allow additional trees to be built. And I think it also kind of lays a good groundwork for the testing of zoning two-point-oh that we can always come back and take a look at the ordinance if it needs to be readdressed next year. So, thank you again, and please pass the ordinance as presented today. Thank you.
Greg Levine.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I will say this. Trees really are important for the health of the people that live here. And as much as this ordinance has, these drafts have had some improvement in them, they're still just not doing enough. The recompense fee is an improvement, but there are lots of discounts and opportunities to not pay that full 140, I can't remember, 160. The minimum trees that chart that was added in today is certainly helpful. There is a certain percentage of trees will be planted on every developed property, which can help in growing new canopy, which we did not have in the last version. And, you know, with the community has done a lot of work, and y'all have heard a lot, and I'm sure your heads are spinning as mine is. There's so much, when you change one thing, it affects another part of this ordinance. And if you really are keeping track of it, it's definitely a little bit, it gets confusing. What I would say is that in the end, we need to have, that cap needs to be higher because R4 and R5 are so much of what gets developed in single-family that right now, if you save the 30%, wow, that's so much. 30% you get, you're going to pay for a R4 lot, like $3,700 in recompense, which is nothing for a new development. This is just not doing enough. It was a step in the right direction, but it's not. And of course, the preservation needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed in that next six months as Commissioner Bond, Councilperson Bond, has tried to address and make sure that happens. Thank you.
Molly Reed Wu.
Thank you all for hearing our opinions, and thank you for leading the city in good ways. When we stood today and said the Pledge of Allegiance, the thing that struck me most is the ending, liberty and justice for all. And when I see today, as we've honored our civil rights heroes, as we've honored our immigrant communities, I appreciate council members, Faroki specifically, Councilmember Bakhtiari, thank you for that. Thank you, Councilmember Bond, for highlighting the civil rights history that we have and share. I'd especially like to thank my Councilman Howard Shook and Mary Norwood for staying in the council as long as since my mother was down here talking and doing a good job for us all. It's hard work, but it's a work of liberty and justice for all that you do at the local level. We all need trees. Please, take your time and make sure we have a tree ordinance that protects the liberty and justice for all to live and breathe in this city. When you clearcut, you basically tear out your lungs, and not just your own lungs. It happened to me right next door to me, neighbor, clearcut an old-growth forest. He might have paid $20,000 to do it, and he stole a lot from everybody who needs those trees to breathe, who needs those trees to cool the air. We're in a difficult situation, so I wanted to thank also Abel Mabel, who came down here. And please also consider, listen, that Georgia power station can go in the gulch. When you give somebody a $1.9 billion bonus, put the damn power station in the gulch and don't demean Vine City anymore. Anyway, thank you, council members, for doing a good job. I appreciate it. And thank you for standing up for liberty and justice for all.
Deborah Pearson.
Somebody left their phone. With great respect and appreciation, I welcome you all. I am Deborah Pearson, and I have served the city of Atlanta by working as a classroom educator for 30 years, and half of that time was spent at Frederick Douglass High School, Councilman Bond. The planet is warming. The science and the data are clear. Global warming is not a hoax, and the resources of the planet are not infinite. Trees are a way to mitigate the warming of our planet. Trees provide life through the release of oxygen and the storage of carbons. I do not understand why efforts to save trees are met with skepticism, a skepticism that often feeds greed and profit. My home is situated in a small forest amongst hundreds of trees, and I was lucky to find my home. The builder did not clearcut the lot. Instead, he built around the mature hardwood trees that existed. Thus, I know building and tree preservation can and must exist. Allowing builders to destroy the earth by beating it into submission by removing every tree on a build site for the purpose of profit is not sustainable. These building practices are destructive, short-sighted, and pessimistic. Please support legislation that protects one of Atlanta's most valuable resources, its trees. Thank you.
Nataki Osborne-Jones.
I should have.
You have four minutes to dedicate your time. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, members of council. I'm Nataki Osborne-Jones, speaking on behalf of the West Atlanta Watershed Alliance or Wawa. Our mission is to improve the quality of life within the West Atlanta Watershed by protecting, preserving, and restoring our community's natural resources. We are key stakeholders and a focus group participant in the Trails ATL Plan Development. We've shared feedback at multiple junctures with members of the Trails ATL Plan Partners. And one of our guiding principles is that the process is just as important as the results. We asked the Atlanta City Council to consider an external community engagement firm to support ongoing engagement methods throughout the design and implementation phases of the Trails ATL Master Plan Incorporated. While the MPU model and other meetings are helpful, many residents are still left out, and their voices are not always adequately incorporated into the details of developing plans. A separate entity could help equitably amplify the existing engagement efforts and ensure that all voices are heard. As a resident of the Cascade Road Corridor, where we have been dealing with several challenges with the implementation of an important improvement project that is needed and valued by many, I can attest to the fact that actually listening to and incorporating the feedback of impacted communities into the project and design is both vital to meeting the project goals and meeting the community's needs. Ideally, with external community engagement leadership, we may see our second request met, which is to develop comprehensive community benefit strategies that advance anti-displacement efforts across the city. Amongst relevant key stakeholders, we'd like to see greater attention towards policy creation that protects existing and legacy residents from displacement. Importantly, we also submit that Ordinance 140-1614 should be considered in the Trails ATL finalization. There is strong evidence in our city's recent history that anti-displacement policies must be in place before development to effectively protect longtime residents. According to a recent National Community Reinvestment Coalition study that highlighted the gentrification and displacement of Black Atlanta residents with a multitude of development projects, these drastic changes disrupt existing social networks and the cultural identity of residents, leading to a sense of loss and alienation. And revitalization efforts often do not benefit the residents that originally advocated for changes in the community. Ultimately, it's also important that we put anti-displacement measures in place that require cooperation across departments in the city. For this plan to be successful in providing equitable access to green space and connectivity to resources, the city must work to further integrate the work of the Departments of Watershed Management, Parks and Recreation, and Transportation to align with equitable development practices and to hold one another accountable. In short, we cannot shrug off things because trails will be implemented across the city. If we are not careful, all of the amenities that even I, as a resident of the city, want and look forward to will only be accessible to a few. Ultimately, Wawa strives for solution creation to occur alongside the Trails ATL implementation process. Atlanta is at a critical crossroads, and its ongoing development in sustainability and resilience and planning for the future are critically important. Our community is strengthened by legacy residents who embody the history and spirit of Atlanta. They deserve to benefit from access to green space without the risk of being priced out. We are committed to working together with all partners and the community to see these goals forward. Thank you.
Next is Srinivas Gamadi.
I came to Atlanta 15 years ago, and it has been a wonderful time. It's a welcoming city and as exemplified by the declaration you just made before this about immigration and welcoming. Thank you for that. So the first thing I noticed while driving around Atlanta is when I look up, those huge, tall, beautiful trees, right? It's not just me. Many people who land in Atlanta, the first thing they notice is the beautiful tree canopy. You pretty much see, or you can't even see the buildings. So not only that, after that, I, I mean, based on my childhood memories, these are so beautiful, how can I climb them, right? So there is the Atlanta Tree Climbing Club, which I came to know about, and then I joined, and we climb trees a few times a month. So we have a T-shirt which says, the slogan on the T-shirt is, "Get high, climb trees." So that's not just a slogan. It's actually the uplifting elevation, the life energy of the trees, right? You feel it. So I would like to thank and appreciate the leadership that Matt Westmoreland and of course, there are others whom I, we don't know about, who is working with various environment groups like Save Soil Movement, the Atlanta Tree, Atlanta Tree Association, and there are other environmental groups that spoke before, Chet Tisdale and Deborah Pearson. So taking leadership in balancing the economic development with.
Two times expired.
Economic development with trees. Thank you very much.
Royce Mann.
Hello, council. My name is Royce Mann. I am a community advocate and a lifelong Atlanta resident from the Lake Clear Candler Park neighborhood. I first want to express my solidarity with Ms. Anderson, who spoke about her son Devin Anderson's murder. For too long, Atlanta has allowed folks and badges to break our laws and not be held accountable for it. And if we want true public safety, it's time that we stop allowing killers with badges to patrol our neighborhoods. Now I want to talk about the proposed tree protection ordinance. In Buckhead, the average life expectancy is about 87 years. In Bankhead, it's about 64 years. This disparity is unacceptable, and it is a tragic reflection of the fact that this city is for too long overlooked certain communities. We know this disparity is a result of an insufficient supply of affordable housing, a lack of high-quality healthcare, and inadequate access to healthy and affordable food. What we often fail to recognize is that it is also an issue of climate justice. In Atlanta, the presence of environmental hazards has been shown to have a direct correlation with lower life expectancies. Countless studies have further shown that access to clean air and clean water are vital factors in producing positive health outcomes. The presence of trees is an important aspect of this. Trees not only produce positive health outcomes. Studies have shown that the presence of trees around schools even help increase educational outcomes. Too often, the city bows to demands of developers at the expense of low-income and Black and Brown communities. And this proposed tree ordinance, while it has a number of good aspects, feels like yet another example of this unfortunate pattern. So I'm here to urge the council to please consider reinserting the important tree preservation standards for single-family residential developments. And if you do pass this ordinance today, to please continue your work to protect Atlanta's vital tree canopy. Thank you.
Next is Sheri Mann-Stewart.
Hello, council. It's wonderful to see some people here I've worked with in the past and I consider friends. I am also here today to speak for the trees. I feel a bit like the Lorax. But I don't have notes. I'm just speaking from the heart. I'm someone who was born here in Atlanta in 1961, which I'm pretty sure makes me older or having had more years here than many of you. Doesn't make me better, but it does give me some perspective over these decades. I've really appreciated how many voices have been here today, speaking on the same side of things as I am for the trees. I'm not a member of any official organization, so I didn't know if there would be other speakers here today about it, but I'm so glad there are. I do, however, stay in contact. I live in a community. Some of you have even been there for various events over in Lake Clear. And we have a number of families who live in a, it's called a cohousing community. And we have about 15 households on one acre of land. But so we've been emailing about this issue for the past period of time. And so I do feel that I can represent some of those other voices as well. Many of them could not be here today because of work and other commitments. But the point being that the trees are so important to seniors as well as our youth, and you've had other speakers refer to that today. And so I just encourage you to make sure that you're representing the citizens and those who don't have as loud voices as developers or folks with large amounts of money. We elect you to represent us, who have individual voices. So thank you for the work you're doing, and please protect the trees.
Margie McLeod. Jody Williams. Jody Williams.
Hello again. I'm here concerning the homeless, and mainly my sister's house. Most of the women that was once homeless and has completed the program at my sister's house needs low-income housing. They were given six months to save money and secure an apartment. There is so many stipulations to securing housing in Atlanta. First, they need good credit, which they probably don't have because a lot of them were evicted. And then you need no evictions. Most of the ladies at my sister's house work in the city of Atlanta. One thing that I need you all to recommend is that some of that money that the mayor gave to invest Atlanta, mainly the. gave to Invest Atlanta, mainly the $200 million, maybe they can return some of that money and not build, but buy a housing complex for these ladies. They have jobs, and they've only saved for six months. So, because they passed that 404 bill, that they have to pay two times the rent, and it's so expensive that they'll be right back on the streets. So, if you guys can recommend that the mayor give them, give some of that money to build, not to build, but to purchase one of those apartment complexes that Invest Atlanta has built so that he can house these people. And I guess I'll stop talking at this point, but them and their children will be right back on the streets. It's about 200 of them. So, if you can request that the mayor help them out, you know, since he's taking this money and giving it to the investors. Thank you. Oh, I want to thank Ishay for giving the budget that I had been asking for before she came to the city council. So, I just want to say thank you for doing such a great job.
Craig Pennergrass.
I know I have to go out because it's so cold.
Good afternoon. I'm Craig Pennergrass, and I'm speaking about the tree protection ordinance. I'm a lawyer focused on real estate, land use, and environmental law, and I'm also a litigator on issues relating to those matters sometimes. The current draft of the, was issued last week of the TPO, is deficient in not including an objective numerical tree preservation standard. That defect would be to the detriment of both developers and community members when it comes to the process. It has narrative standards, but just as in zoning, it's important to have numeric standards. The January version of the TPO and the May 1 version had those numeric tree preservation standards. The version that just came out doesn't. If you don't have numeric standards, you're setting the stage for litigation on all fronts. If you don't have numeric standards, then you are going to have appeals to the Tree Commission that are going to occupy its time. You're not going to have the guidance to the Arborist Division to be able to make good decisions based on numeric standards. It's going to be vague. I heard one threat of litigation about the TPO, but it didn't take that into account. The threat of litigation would be, oh, if it's applied as to a particular property so that it becomes a regulatory taking, then that could be the subject of litigation. That's the subject of every zoning decision. It's not across the board, gentlemen.
Time has expired, Mr. Pennergrass.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. MacLeod. Come back to you, Margie MacLeod.
It's cold. These seniors, we got arthritis, but this.
If anybody can heat it up in here, it's you.
I need to take that condition home. But while I'm here, Congress is going to come, rent control. But I'm going to make y'all do homework. Tyra Perry have a movie, and I want each one, all of you, to look at this movie. It's not I'm pushing this movie. The name of it is Straw, S-T-R-A-W. When you see this movies, this movie, you'll see why I come down here and say we need rent control, put a cap on the rent. The movie was made right here in the city of Atlanta, and that's why I'm here, because you had graduation, you had the kids, that they could be able to live in their neighborhood, not to move, just like all of y'all was able to stay in your neighborhood and graduate. This is why I'm out here for the youth, and that's here also, you. I want you, this is why I want you to do some homework. I want you to check how many children that went in foster care by being homeless. So, when I come back again, I want you to tell me how many children have went in foster care because of homelessness. Take care. Rent control matter.
Catherine Kolb.
I'm Catherine Kolb. I've done a lot of work with tree ordinances and many of the stakeholder groups for the last eight years or so. As everyone probably knows at this point, the city of Atlanta has spent over $1 million on coming up with, trying to come up with a tree ordinance. We had the Biohabitats consultants. They failed to write a tree ordinance, but they were paid. The Planning Director hired another consultant group. They failed to write a tree ordinance. The mayor said we should have a task force. We spent a year on one task force, then we skipped a year, spent yet another year on another task force. That was in 2024. All of the input that has been gathered from community, the city has spent literally probably over $1 million gathering that input. The input all says we need to protect more trees in the city of Atlanta. We're losing too many. We're losing too many at an unsustainable rate. There was an ordinance that had tree protection standards, a single-family tree protection standard was vetted by the Planning Department and put through the NPUs, and it was moving forward. The Planning Department added a commercial standard. I don't think that was perfect, but we had a preservation standard, at least for single-family residential, in the May 1 draft. Within a very short period of time, probably a week, perhaps even hours, all of the tree preservation requirements were struck from the ordinance. And that happened under pressure from the development community. The development community has said that this is a balanced ordinance. It isn't at all. They got every single thing that they wanted. Every single piece of tree protection was struck. That is not right. It's not good for the city. The process was a failure, and the result is a failure. I know that we're going to be moving forward after this, and I hope that you all will consider really putting in something of value. This tree ordinance that you're passing forward today does not include that. Thank you.
Christina Felder.
My name is Christina Felder, and I am a resident of Southwest Atlanta, District 11. I'm here today to voice concerns that reflect not only my thoughts, but the thoughts of many of our community, especially regarding land development amongst Greenbrier Parkway and Cascade Row, Phase 1 Streetscape, Phase 1. Let me start with Greenbrier. It's disheartening to see how much land is being used, or should I say wasted, to build yet another gas station in our area. We already have enough, and this isn't about what's being built. It's about what could be built instead. Southwest Atlanta deserves better. This land could be used for something that truly uplifts the community. For example, a public library, a community park, a cultural park, or a marketplace that residents and small businesses, or even just local businesses across the board can be utilized, this particular place, for a marketplace, to grow our community and also to create more jobs. These types of investments strengthen our neighborhoods, not more concretes and pumps. Now, I want to call attention to the Cascade Row, Phase 1 Streetscape project. This isn't about, again, what's being built, but how it's being built and managed. This has been in the process for years, and the delays per planning is questionable. And it's been frustrating, and the standard process has created challenges for local residents, especially concerning the streetscape of how it's being implemented. Commercial sidewalks are being built within a residential area, making it into a one-way street and hard for two-way cars to cross. Because of this, it's been really difficult to navigate within our areas and for residents to be able to cross and navigate within that area as a whole. City Council.
Time has expired. Want to wrap up?
Yes. Atlanta is growing, and we know that, but our neighborhoods deserve to grow with the city and not left behind or mismanaged within the process. Let's build Southwest Atlanta that reflects the pride, history, and potential of its people. Thank you.
Steven Mohammed.
Steven Mohammed. Okay, well, that concludes the public comment section of the meeting today. I'd like to thank all the members of the public who joined us and provided comments to the council. Next, we'll move on to the report of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President Protem and members of council. Good afternoon. I, Corinne A. Wenda, municipal clerk of the city of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, June 2, 2025 are true and correct.
Without, we can take this by unanimous consent. Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the motion to adopt the journal.
11 yeas, 0 nays.
Moving on to communications. Madam Clerk.
We have one item, Council President Protem. That's 25C0080. This is a communication from Councilmembers Aliana Bakhtiari, District 5; Alex Wong, District 6; Howard Shook, District 7; Mary Nora, District 8; and Ms. Westmoreland, Post Two-at-Large, appointing Mr. Matthew Reeves to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee, staff recommendation to refer to Transportation Committee and Committee and Council.
Let us follow that course. Madam Clerk.
That concludes the communication.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any veto legislation?
There are none.
Madam Clerk, is there any unfinished business?
We do have one, sir.
I believe that is 25R3449 out of the Transportation Committee, but I don't see that Councilmember Amos is with us. I'll ask the sponsor to take this, since that is the case.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. Colleagues, this has been something that we've been discussing, largely in the Transportation Committee for the last couple of cycles. This is legislation that essentially authorizes central line of progress, also of the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District to conduct weight-finding work ahead of the FIFA World Cup coming next year, the idea to make it easier for people to navigate downtown Atlanta. The original legislation calls for a $3 million allocation to ensure that that work can happen. We do actually have a substitute, so we've had some conversations, both with the administration, with the Department of Transportation, as well as ADID, and I think we're finally in a good place. And so, the substitute that I'll ask to bring up, one allocates additional monies, so instead of $3 million, it's $4 million. And then separately, there are some clarifications about account strings and updates to the exhibit that is in the legislation. And so, I would like to.
We wouldn't, since it is unfinished business, we'll need a motion to adopt first, and then you can make a motion to bring forth the substitute.
I'll move to adopt.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dozier to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Wong, which is now before us.
And then I'll, oh, we've got to vote, right.
No, we'll do the substitute first.
Okay, then I would like to vote to substitute, and I believe we all have the copy of the substitute.
And a motion to substitute by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Please prepare the vote on the substitute.
Will everyone please vote? The votes close, 14 yeas, 0 nays.
And colleagues, I would like to adopt that substitute.
Does the substitute change the caption?
Yes, it does.
I hope you'll read it in, please.
The new caption is as follows. "So, resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier and Mayor Faroki, as substituted by Atlanta City Council, authorizing the mayor's designation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute a project management agreement with the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District for downtown pedestrian weight-finding in an amount not to exceed $4 million and zero cents. All contracted work to be charged, due and paid from the fund department, organization, account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. And I move to adopt this substitute."
There's been a motion to adopt a substitute by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Please prepare the vote on the motion to adopt on substitute.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yeas, 0 nays.
15 yeas, 0 nays. That item is adopted on substitute. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to remove item 3 on page 5. It's 2501133. 2501133.
Any other items, colleagues? All right. I'm going to motion to approve consent agenda, section 1, by Councilmember Wong, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
Will everyone please vote?
Councilmember Collins.
The votes close, 15 yeas, 0 nays.
15 yeas, 0 nays. Councilmember Shook.
Thank you. My motion is to send the following five items to the mayor's office post haste. 2501297, 2501318, 2501343, 25R3102, and 2501317.
So, the last one was 1317?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Wong, you had additional items?
Yeah, I'd like to add to Mr. Shook's motion, add on page 4, item number 2, 2501326. So, page 4, item 2, 2501326.
Madam Clerk, or Councilmember Winston.
Thank you. Yes, I'd also like to add two items, one on page 5, 25-r-3584, and 25-r-3585 on page 6. Thank you.
All right. Any other items to be rolled under this motion to send post haste to the mayor, which I believe was, first, are you clear on all those items, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Shook, seconded by Councilmember Wong, and I believe we can do this by unanimous consent. Mr. Parliamentary, unanimous consent?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please sound the count of unanimous consent on the motion to send those items post haste to the mayor.
That's 15 yeas, 0 nays.
15 yeas, 0 nays. Motion is favorable, and those items will be sent to the mayor's office post haste. Moving on to the consent agenda, section 2, motion to refer these to their proper committees, moved by Councilmember Wong, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yeas, 0 nays.
15 yeas, 0 nays. Those items will be referred to their committees. Moving on to the report of standing committees, first up, we have Public Safety and Legal Administration, Chairwoman Boone. She's been requested to come back to her. Next up is City Utilities Committee, Councilmember Lewis.
Please turn to page 34 of your full council agenda for the standing
for the Standing Committee Report for City Utilities for item number one. 125R 3552, item one, three, page 34. A resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis, authorizing the mayor or his designated need to enter into intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County, Georgia, on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for the provision of water and sewer treatment services for certain areas of the city by the Cobb County Water System. All contracted work will be charged, due and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for the purposes. This item was favorable on condition. The condition for this legislation was for DWM to submit the IGA to be attached to the legislation as an amendment. The condition has been satisfied. Motion to amend and add this attachment.
There's been a motion to amend by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Wong, to add an attachment to the legislation. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
Motion to adopt is amended.
I'm going to motion to adopt as amended by Councilmember Lewis, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Please prepare the vote to adopt as amended.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
Council President Pro.
15 yays, zero nays. That item is favorable, as amended, adopted as amended.
Council President Protem, this concludes my report.
Thank you. You're Chairman Lewis. Next up is Community Development Human Services, Councilmember Winston.
Thank you. Colleagues, the first item, 24 dash O 1691. Um, you all have a, have a substitute, um, that you've been able to receive in your inbox. So I'm going to make a motion to bring forth the substitute.
I'm going to make a motion to bring forth the substitute by Councilmember Winston. I believe that was seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
Thank you.
15 yays, zero nays. That item is amended, that was amended.
That's a substitute.
Oh, substitute.
Bring forth the substitute.
Substitute is before us.
All right, 24 dash O 1691, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, as substituted by the Community Development Human Service Committee to amend the Atlanta City Code Part II General Ordinances, Chapter 158, Article 2, Tree Protection, to adopt a new tree protection ordinance for the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. Uh, colleagues, this came out of committee favorable with four yays, one nay, and one abstention. Um, if there's any questions about the substitute, just so colleagues know that the substitute's before you right now, uh, is the first substantial update to our tree protection ordinance, I think, in over 25 years. Uh, we currently have a tree protection ordinance. So what this does is, um, in addition to, uh, the current standards that we have now, it doubles funding, uh, for low-income senior assistance programs to $400,000 a year for pruning, removal, and planting. Uh, introduces recompense reductions for affordable housing. Um, it sets minimum tree density requirements by zoning. It establishes max, maximum recompense limits to provide, uh, financial predictability. Uh, it increases tree recompense rate to $140 an inch, which will be adjusted annually for inflation. It doubles the penalty for illegal tree removal from $100,000, uh, to $200,000 per acre. It incentivizes tree planting by granting a 1.25 credit for caliber inches planted. It requires inch-by-inch replacement for, uh, replacement or recompense for trees removed on city-owned property. It applies tree protections to affordable housing built on public land. It establishes a clear presence for tree replacement over payment. In addition, it adds 10-plus staff positions, including an arborist and an ecologist, funded by the Tree Trust Fund and General Fund, and launches a, uh, uh, registration program for tree professionals. And lastly, it provides guidance for homeowners navigating insurance-related tree removal. Coming out of committee, I will make a motion to approve that substituted.
There's been a motion to approve a substituted by Councilmember Winston. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dozier. Please prepare the vote. I'll actually have some comment first. Councilmember Bakhtiari. Councilmember Wong, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem, and of course, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as has been stated by many speakers today, this is yet another step in what has been a arduous journey uh, to perfect a tree protection ordinance for our city. Uh, I know some of the speakers referenced, uh, that the, some of the items that were very important, uh, for tree protection have been stripped out. One of the sticking points in getting, uh, the legislation to this point to be voted on was the argument, uh, that our commissioner made really throughout since the original, uh, iteration of this ordinance was introduced some months ago, that it should travel, uh, or become effective when the zoning rewrite, uh, is made effective in January. Uh, without the tree protections that were referenced, that were removed, I didn't feel that that was necessary, and hence that's why I always abstained in committee. But after more conversations and considerations with, uh, the commissioner and the administration, uh, if they want to follow that particular process, of course, you know, I had said in committee I wasn't going to be a block, uh, to that progress. Because even though, and I want to reassure activists that are here today and those who are in the Development Committee, we both know that people did not get everything that they wanted out of this iteration of the ordinance. But I also want to make clear that the movement to improve tree protections uh, in Atlanta is not over because this passes. One of the things that, uh, we came to an agreement with the administration and at the suggestion of the commissioner was that we would monitor and report back to the committee on the activities of reconciling the zoning applications and development, hence the development applications, along with our tree ordinance and its impacts. And so to make sure that that policy takes place, there is legislation drafted, and I've circulated it amongst those who were here a few moments ago, and am open, of course, for additional signatures from other council members who weren't present, uh, to make sure that that process happens over the next six months. So I'll be introducing that at the end of the meeting, uh, so that we can have an accountability process for the balance of the year. So I will be supporting this piece of what is a tapestry that we are working on over a large period of time to protect and preserve the trees in our community. And so people who did not get everything that they wanted, the process with this passing, the process is not over. We're still going to continue to work. We're still going to continue to monitor to try to protect the trees in our community. And so please don't feel defeated, uh, because you didn't get everything that you needed with this. I took some solace. Uh, I'm not a Buddhist, but I use Buddhist practices. And Buddha once said that be grateful for any amount of progress, even if it's only the distance of a grain of, of rice. And so we have not gotten to, uh, the finish line on fully protecting our trees in the, in our Atlanta community. Uh, but we're still on that journey, right? And we still want to have, uh, a city that's in the trees, a city that protects us with its beauty, with, you know, with its tree canopy, and one where people who want to move here, who want to have a home in the city, can live. And, you know, that goes hand-in-hand with those who provide those places to live. So this is just one more step on that journey. And so, you know, we look forward to introducing and passing the legislation that we have. And some of, some of you are in the room, and I'm going to recirculate that paper so that we can have the accountability we need going forward for the next six months. So I withdraw.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Collins.
Great, thank you for that, Council, um, thank you for that, Councilman Wong. It kind of sums up, sums up just, um, some of my thoughts as well. I really just wanted to thank the committee, um, and the community for just the, the depth of conversation and dialogue over the last few months. I've been, you know, following the multiple, multiple revisions of this and truly appreciate the work that has been done. I definitely just wanted to uplift the additional, the importance of the improved oversight implementation piece. Um, I think, um, me and all of our colleague, colleagues, what I've gotten from all the emails, there's a lot of misinformation about the, the t, the tree protection ordinance or what it entails. So as we move forward, this process, just really want to encourage, um, encourage the Department of City Planning and us as your, your elected leaders just to take every opportunity to educate the community fully on all of the new pieces of this. But, um, I, uh, new pieces of this as we move forward with it, but also ensuring that this is lock and step with zoning 2.0. So I was really appreciative to hear the community comments on that piece as well. Um, so I just wanted to uplift, I just wanted to, um, uplift that, particularly the oversight and implementation piece and the concern of making sure that's funded as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins.
But I will also be very transparent in that I'm going to be the thorn in multiple people's sides until we get this right. So I'm dealing with clear-cutting my community. I need some way to push back on it. This is a start, but to my colleagues and to everyone listening, I'm not done. So I just wanted to be very transparent about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bakhtiari. Councilmember Lewis.
Similar to Councilmember Bakhtiari, didn't go far enough for me. The legislation that Councilmember Wong put forth is what I feel confident in. Trees Atlanta sits in my district, so I truly understand. I'm truly here, and I know the experts are speaking loud on this. And so it didn't go far enough for me, but to not be the, what I've learned as a councilperson and being here is that you can't, you can't kill it because you didn't get everything you wanted. Uh, because it can't just be my idea. And from what I see, no one's happy. Uh, both sides are like, give me more, give me more. As a union person, we kind of like that. And I think that's the way we can make this even better piece of legislation. So thank you, Councilmember Wong, for your experience. Thank you, Councilmember Bakhtiari, for fighting this, uh, for punching through the wall to make sure we can add some more stuff to it. But, um, standing with Councilmember Wong on this one. Thank you again for your experience, sir.
I thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Any other colleagues? If not, we have a motion to approve in front of us. That was seconded by Councilmember Dozier. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. That item is favorable on substitute. Councilmember Wong.
Have a motion sent to the mayor's office post haste.
Second. There's been a motion to send to the mayor's office post haste by Councilmember Wong, seconded by Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays, and 24O 1691 will be sent to the mayor's office post haste.
Thank you. And I just want to congratulate colleagues on passing what is probably one of the most substantial updates we've made to our tree protection ordinance in over 25 years. Uh, this was a step forward. It wasn't a step backward. We just modernized our tree protection ordinance for the City of Atlanta, um, while strengthening Atlanta's canopy than it, more than it was a few seconds ago. Uh, and so I'm, I'm proud of everyone who worked on this. Um, shout out to the, uh, Planning Department, who put in countless hours. Uh, see Commissioner Prince in the back room. Councilmembers and colleagues on the Community, uh, Community Development Human Services Committee, who put countless hours in you, uh, in, in on this. So thank you to all, everyone who, who had, put their voice out, uh, to help us strengthen what we have today. So thank you all for being part of that process. Um, I'll move on to the second item that we have, uh, which is 25 dash O 1339. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Wong to waive section number listed of the land subdivision ordinance of the City of Atlanta for the purposes of facilitating an announcement of 1052 Hurst Street Northwest as two separate lots substantially consistent with the historic configuration and prevailing plant fat pattern and for other purposes. Um, colleagues, this came out, uh, favorable on condition, uh, that we received a substitute. That substitute has been received. Um, so I will make a motion to bring forth the substitute.
Motion to bring forth substitute by Councilmember Winston. Seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote on the substitute.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. The substitute is before us.
I'll make a motion to approve that substituted.
Motion to approve a substituted by Councilmember Winston. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote on the motion to approve on substitute.
The vote is open. The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. That item is adopted on substitute.
Thank you. And then lastly, there was an item, 25 dash O 1133, which was on page five that was pulled from the consent, uh, agenda. Um, I'd like to make a, uh, sorry, I'll read it. Uh, an ordinance by councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Wong, Collins, Winston, Faroki, Amos, Dozier, Bakhtiari, Wong, Norwood, Boone, Callio Overstreet, and Lewis, to adopt the Trails ATL Plan as the City of Atlanta's master plan for a citywide network of trails to incorporate the Trails ATL Plan into the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, A, and for other purposes. So I'd like to make a motion to amend to add Councilmember Hillis's name.
Second. There's been a motion to amend to add Councilmember Hillis's, my name. Uh, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Councilmember Collins.
The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. Uh, item is now amended and before us.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
There's been a motion to approve as amended by Councilmember Winston. Seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote to adopt as amended.
The vote is open.
Our screen isn't updated with the current ordinances. Just want to give you, sorry about that. Thank you.
Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Wong, what is your? The votes close, 15 yays, zero nays. The vote's closed, 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. That item is approved as amended.
Thank you.
Adopted as amended.
This does conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Winston, Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yeah, this was, I just wanted to also note the passing of that paper, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Winston, as well as Eric Ganther, the PATH team, and Parks and Rec for this huge lift. Thank you all so much. And I know, Eric, you're very happy, so congratulations.
Uh, Councilmember Lewis?
And same thing, the only thing I, I actually wanted to make one change to it because we've been talking about names of trails in our district, and I know that South Side Trail, we wanna make sure we named Maurice Stone, Maurice Stone Davis Trail. So, uh, those are some, only things I wanna do, but continue to do the work you're doing. Thank you for showing me paths, uh, things we've been taking our entire life in our area are truly trails and they should have been trails. Uh, thank you for showing me paper streets in our community are truly trails and they should be streets. Uh, thank you again.
And if there's no one else, I just want to say also that this is a, a big step forward for the city of Atlanta, adopting our first ever citywide trails master plan. This is a vision, uh, we had last budget year, uh, and was adopted as a budget amendment to fund the study. So, uh, now let's get, uh, building some more trails across the city. Thank you all. Next up, we will hear from Public Safety and Legal Administration, Councilwoman Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Council President Protam. We have one item today, 25-0-1260. Item number one, page 31, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Wong as substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend Atlanta City Code Part II Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Dealers and Manufacturers, Division 2, License Subdivision 1, General Provisions, Section 10-52, Advertisement of Content to Engage in Business to Advise the Notice Signage Requirements for Alcohol License Applications and for Other Purposes. This item comes before the body favorable four yays, one nay. Accordingly, the recommendation is to adopt. Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt out of committee. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote's closed, that's 14 yays, zero nays.
14, 14 yays, zero nays. That item is adopted.
This concludes our report today, Mr. President Protam.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. Next up is Transportation Committee, Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir, Mr. President Protam. Um, item 25-0-1324, ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Atlanta to execute all documents necessary for the acquisition of certain property interests necessary for the Cleveland Avenue sidewalk installation project. Authorizing negotiations with property owners for the acquisition of such property interests. Authorizing title search, appraisals, surveys, and other items necessary for the acquisition of such property are unsuccessful to institute condemnation proceedings pursuant to the declaration of taken methods OCGA 32-3-1, waiving certain provisions of Article 10 Real Estate and Procurement Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance. All contracted work and payment for pro- property interest to be paid from account numbers listed here and for other purposes, this coming out of committee with a motion to file.
There's a motion to file before us. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays. Uh, the motion to file is approved.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. President Protam, there is a need to enter into a committee of hold, so I make a motion to enter into a committee of hold.
There's been a motion to enter into a committee of hold by Chairman Amos. Second by Councilmember Vaughn. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, 13 yays, one nay.
13 yays, one nay. We have now entered into committee of hold.
Thanks, sir. This is item 25-0-1340, ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Vaughn as amended by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor his designated on behalf of the city of Atlanta to grant temporary, permanent, and perpetual easement under, above, upon, under, and across a portion of right-of-way of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Southwest, consisting of approximately 1,865 square feet for the construction, repair, replacement, maintenance, and operation of an aerial pedestrian bridge with a top bridge elevation of 1,198.82 feet and bottom bridge elevation of 1,076.76 feet to the Georgia Building Authority Body, Corporate, and Politic and Instrumentally of the State of Georgia and a public corporation created and existing under the laws of the State of Georgia and waiving any conflicting provisions of Article 10, Division 14, Subsection 3 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinance and for other purposes. Motion to adopt.
And a motion to adopt by Chairman Amos. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Overstreet. Please prepare the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open.
President Protam, I have a couple of questions.
The Council, Councilmember, who was that? Sorry.
Esha.
Collins, yes. Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, so just really quickly, um, Chair Amos, I know this is the, the, the Skybridge, you know, the Skybridge project, and one, just do try to understand, um, in terms of the, in terms of the concerns of safety and also, uh, you know, the, the issues of safety, but also this growing concern in terms of community engagement and voice. I think it would, I would be remiss not to bring that up in this space, knowing that, you know, there's been comments made, you know, comments about it, but also there's been attention that has been brought to it. So any additional context in terms of this will be, will be great.
So I don't know if there's anyone here from the administration that can answer that question? And I don't see anyone, or from transportation, I doubt, if legal can answer that at this particular time. So those definitely answers we can get back to you. Um, I can give you my own personal insight, but I don't think that's what, what you're, what you're looking for.
Or just any information. I mean, with no one, hopefully someone comes in, but just in terms of any information that came from the Transportation Committee meeting from, from last week will be, you know, would be great.
Well, I mean, definitely at the meeting, we had someone from Dean that was there who just spoke about giving the state authorization and the air rights to actually, um, do this development, which will be the aerial bridge. It'll be connecting the, um, state Capitol to the new legislative building that has been, um, built as well. They talked about safety. They talked about, um, inclement weather and things of that nature. So those was the basic things that was talked about, the need for it.
I complete your, Councilmember Collins, does that complete your questions at this moment?
Oh, Marcy, you want to say anything? Because I know you're, um, committed.
So the final thing, if I may, Protam, President, the final thing that they spoke about was the fact that this really was about just air rights. Um, they're not asking us for any funding. They're not asking us for anything. This is really a bridge in between one state building to another, no pedestrian, uh, commercial zone of bottom, as the concern was indicated. You, you know, of course, with the interaction with, uh, with other, other members that would, it would usually prohibit them from interacting on a commercial basis on the, on the lower level. This one is not that type of, um, bridge. And they really talked about the fact that the only reason they're coming to the city is because of air rights, not funding or anything else. We just have to permit air rights.
So, okay, so regardless, the state could easily build a bridge.
Correct.
And, but then also, I know there's a right, there's a right-of-way piece. I think also one of the big pieces, just to emphasize, is also just ensuring public access, um, to, you know, to the, you know, to the bridge. I know we talk about it, but I think there is, there is a concern regarding the fact that we do have other bridges from other entities that the public don't have as easy access to.
That's not this project. This project is from one state building to another state building.
So still the requirements of anybody that go into, it's a public building, so anyone that needs requirements going to a state building will still have access to this, this space.
Okay. Any other?
Does that complete your questions? Councilmember Collins at this moment?
Um, yeah, I think so, yes. I just, I wasn't sure if anyone else came in that wanted to share anything.
All right, Councilmember Lewis?
And not speaking to Councilmember Collins, but standing with Councilmember Collins, I had people in my area reach out the same. Want to say thank you for explaining this to us, that it caused the city of Atlanta. But, but standing exactly where Councilmember Collins is, understanding that I've had, we had a lot of questions about it today, and I had people actually reach out to me personally. But thank you all for explaining this to me.
All right, any other speakers? If not, we have a vote before us.
Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, 10 yays, 2 nays?
10 yays, 2 nays. That item's adopted. And now we will need a-
We make a motion to come out of committee of hold.
Motion to come out of committee of hold by Council, Councilmember Amos, second by Councilmember Juan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, 11 yays, zero nays.
11 yays, zero nays. We're now back in regular session.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. I make a motion to adopt all things adopted in committee of hold.
Motion been made by Councilmember Amos to adopt all items and gross made in committee of hold. Second by Councilmember Juan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Collins, what is your vote?
Councilmember Collins indicated she's a yes.
That's 12 yays or one nay?
12 yays, one nays. That item, all, all items adopted in committee of hold are now adopted in regular session.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. At this time, I'd like a motion to send 25-0-1340 to the mayor's office post haste.
There's been a motion to send this item to the mayor's office post haste. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Shook. Please prepare the vote to send this item to the mayor's office post haste.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, 11 yays, 2 nays.
11 yays, 2 nays. Motion to send this to the mayor's office post haste is favorable.
Thanks, sir, to answer my report.
Thank you, Chairman Amos. Now for Finance Executive Committee, Chairman Shook.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. We have two papers. Um, I will make a motion to bring forward a substitute for 25-0-1328.
There's been a motion to bring forth a substitute. Is there a second? Anyone? Second by Councilmember Westmoreland.
The vote is open. The vote's closed, that's 12 yays, zero nays.
12 yays, zero nays. That substitute is before us.
All right, the caption of the substitute is the same. Uh, this is an ordinance, uh, by Shook as substituted authorizing transfer of funds from various council carryforward accounts to the respective council distribution and expense accounts to continue serving the Atlanta community, uh, by funding projects for the public good within their district or donating funds for charitable purposes and for other purposes. Uh, move approval on substitute.
Been a motion to approve on substitute by Chairman Shook. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Councilmember Vaughn? The vote's closed, that's 13, 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays. That item is favorable on substitute.
All right, lastly, 25-0-1338, ordinance by Ms. Boone, waiving the code sections listed here to exercise a second renewal option for a co-op agreement, number of which is listed, uh, cellular and wireline router services utilizing Georgia Technology, Technology Authority Contract, which is listed with AT&amp;T Mobility National Accounts for wireless data services on behalf of Watershed, APD, AIM, and Atlanta Fire Rescue for a term of one year, retroactively effective from the dates listed through the dates listed, to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement, retroactively beginning on the date listed through the exercise of second renewal option to exercise the third amendment to the agreement to add funding in amount not to exceed $109,000. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Motion is to file.
Motion to file is out of committee and is before us. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Councilmember Vaughn indicated he was a yay.
That's 13 yays, zero nays.
13 yays, zero nays. That item will be filed.
Thank you, that is all.
Thank you, Chairman Shook. Next is Committee on Counsel, Chairwoman Collins.
Good afternoon and thank you, Mr. Uh, Council President. We have one item on the report for today's Committee on Counsel. Item number four communications, 25-C-0060. Uh, item number one, a communication from Tony Roberts, Executive Director and CEO of the Atlanta Bar Association, submitting the appointment of Mr. Miguel Dominguez to serve as a member of the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. This appointment is for a term of three years. It is favorable by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. Um, and this item becomes favorable out of the Committee on Counsel, um, as well, and it is, um, we make, um, it, excuse me, the recommendation is to adopt.
We have item in front of us, and the recommendation out of committee is to adopt. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? That's 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays. That item is adopted.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Uh, President, and that is all that we have for the committee.
Thank you, Chairwoman Collins. Next up is the Uzoni Committee, Councilmember Westmoreland. Next up is the Zoning Committee, Councilmember Westmoreland.
Mr. President, we do not have a report.
Great job. Well, that completes the reports of the standing committees. We will now move to personal papers. I didn't, have not received any items for immediate consideration, so we'll move to
Yes, sir, AMOS ID three eight one six six. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, Dustin Hillis, and Marcy Carr Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into contract-listed roadway construction and maintenance large citywide IFB CON DOT twenty-five dash O one two five zero one three nine A, Atlanta paving joint venture IFB CON DOT twenty-five O two one two five zero one three nine B, BRTU Construction and Carolyn Holdings Joint Venture IFBCON DOT two five zero two one two five zero one three nine C, GS Construction Incorporated, and Lewis Contracted Services LLC Joint Venture IFBCON DOT two five zero two one two five zero one three nine D, Stewart Brothers and PK, P two K JV, to provide construction services to the Atlanta Department of Transportation on a task order basis for an initial term of three years with two one-year renewal options to establish a joint task order fund in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty million dollars, with all funds to be charged to and paid from the project and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the Transportation Committee.
AMOS ID three eight one nine six, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, authorizing the city of Atlanta to waive the competitive source selection provision contained in section two dash one one eight seven of Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, as well as other conflicting code provisions to execute an amendment for the sole source operations and maintenance contract, automated Godway Transit System at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Austin Transport USA, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Aviation, to extend the term on a month-to-month basis for a period up to nine months, beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, to expire on or before May first, twenty twenty-six, in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven million four hundred ninety-nine, nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. All services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
AMOS three eight one nine seven, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, authorizing the city of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provision contained in section two dash eleven eighty-seven of Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance, as well as other conflicting code provisions to include but not limited to section two dash one two nine two E, to authorize mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to RFP IT DOA twenty-four dash two dash one two four zero two five seven, Public Safety Systems Operation and Maintenance with Dean All PSS LLC, on behalf of the Department of Aviation, to add services and funding in the amount not to exceed nine million, one hundred, nine million, one hundred eighteen dollars, six hundred fifty-six. Let me go back. Nine million, one hundred eighteen, six hundred fifty-six dollars, six three cent. All contracted services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
AMOS ID three eight two four three, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-six general fund budget to create the District Three Neighborhood Engagement Fund, Trust Fund, for the purpose of funding community engagement activities, including but not limited to community events, outreach initiatives, and civic participation programs, to authorize future donations, sponsorships, and transfer to be deposited into the fund and for other purposes.
That item will be referred to FEC.
AMOS three eight two four two, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, to authorize the chief financial officer to close the District Three Holiday Family Assistance Initiative Fund, number listed, and the District Three Senior Citizens Picnic Fund, number listed, to transfer the remaining balances from these funds into the newly-created District Three Engagement, Neighborhood Engagement Fund and for other purposes.
That item will also be referred to FEC.
AMOS ID three eight two three three, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, to rename Baker Road Northwest to JW Williams Junior Way Northwest, to waive certain provisions of section one three eight dash eight of the City Code of Ordinance and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the Transportation Committee.
AMOS ID three eight two two nine, a resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, requesting the City of Atlanta Department of City planning to develop a senior zone designation to promote age-friendly infrastructure accessibility housing and safer communities for seniors in the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
That item will be referred to CDHS.
Thank you, sir. Last paper.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramus.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Uh, first paper, Elm's ID three eight one seven four, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, who has to designate, designate property located at three eighty Wilkinson Drive, southeast Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one seven, to the single-family residential land use designation and for other purposes.
That item will refer to CDHS.
Thank you. Elm's ID three eight one four seven, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to zone property located at, located at three eighty Wilkinson Avenue, southeast Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one seven, to the R four zoning district and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the zoning committee.
Elm's ID three eight one seven three, a council, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to provide for the annexation of property located at three eighty Wilkinson Drive, southeast Atlanta, Georgia, into the corporate limits of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, pursuant to the one hundred percent method to extend the boundaries of the Atlanta Independent School System, to notify the Department of Community Affairs of the State of Georgia of such annexation and for other purposes.
That will be referred to FEC.
Elm's ID three eight two three eight, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed twenty thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and zero cents to the Old Fourth Ward Business Association, to support the commercial, economic, financial, industrial, and civic interests within the Old Fourth Ward, and authorizing the chief financial officer to make payment from the account number listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will refer to CDHS.
And Elm's ID three eight two three seven, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to waive certain provisions in section sixteen dash thirty-two B dash zero zero two of the, uh, period zero zero two of the Atlanta Code of Ordinance, is related to personal service establishments in the East Atlanta Village Commercial District, so has to allow a salon and beauty school at five twelve Flat Shoals and for other purposes.
That item will refer to PSLA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. Uh, the first paper I have to read in is Elm's ID number three eight two three five, and, and ordinance by Ishay Collins, Matt Westmoreland, Antonio Lewis, Marcy Carr your Overstreet, Dustin Hillis, Howard Shook, Byron Amos, Amir Farroki, Jason Winston, Jason Dozier, and Alex Wan, and ordinance, and Mayor Norwood, and an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend the Atlanta City Code, Part Two, General Ordinances, Chapter one fifty-eight, Vegetation, Article Two, Tree Protection, to allow for an optional arbors meeting early in the, oh, I'm sorry, this is wrong, the development process in lieu of the pre-construction meeting at the permitting process and for other purposes.
That item will refer to CDHS. And Councilmember Bond, before you continue, I just want to make a small correction. Uh, Elm's three eight two three seven, which was the five twelve Flat Shoals Avenue Distance waiver, I'm going instead to refer that to the zoning committee.
No. Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bond.
Okay. And we got Elm's ID number three eight two four one, uh, resolution by Jason Winston, Matt Westmoreland, Ishay Collins, Antonio Lewis, looks like Marcy Carr your Overstreet, Howard Shook, Alex Wan, Amir Farroki, Byron Amos, Jason Dozier, uh, I think that's everyone. A resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, requesting the Commissioner of the Department of City Planning, oh, Dustin Hillis, of City Planning, uh, to include quarterly updates to the testing of the presidates, preservation standards with the zoning two point oh re-white initiative to the Community Development Human Services Committee for the remainder of twenty twenty-five and for other purposes, and also Mayor Norwood has signed on to this.
That item will refer to CDHS.
Elm's ID number three eight two three six, an ordinance by Michael Julian Bond, Byron Amos, Jason Dozier, Matt Westmoreland, and Ishay Collins, and ordinance by Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to accept a donation of an easement from Morehouse College Incorporated for the purpose of installing a historic marker on the campus to commemorate February fifth, nineteen sixty, meeting of fifteen Atlanta University Center students in the historic Cell Hall Annex of Morehouse College, to organize a movement to demand an end to segregation in the City of Atlanta, to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute the easement agreement and for other purposes.
That item will be referred to CDHS.
Thank you. I have Elm's ID number three eight one six one, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to the project management agreement with the PATH Foundation Incorporated, DBA PATH, for the Westside Two Trail Project, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, in an amount not to exceed four hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred forty dollars and zero cents. All contracted work should be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the Transportation Committee.
All right. That concludes my papers, Mr. President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Next up is Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. Elm's ID number three eight two four five, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, Dustin Hillis, Matt Westmoreland, Marcy Carr your Overstreet, Michael Julian Bond, Antonio Lewis, supporting the purchase of acreage currently located in District Nine for green space enhancements, future development, and direct community benefits, and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the CDHS Committee.
Elm's ID number three, three eight two zero one, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, amending FY twenty twenty-six Intergovernmental Grant Fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed five hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and zero cents, to increase the budget amount authorized by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development, for eight Vaneira LLC, and to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a housing assistance payments contract with eight Vaneira LLC, effective September first, twenty twenty-five, and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, in an amount not to exceed five hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and zero cents, for the purpose of providing rental subsidies for twenty-eight low-income families at a Vaneira Village Apartments pursuant to the Section Eight Moderate Rehabilitation Program sponsored by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will refer to CDHS.
Elm's ID number three eight two one two, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in section two dash one one eight seven of Article of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to ratify services rendered and any invoices associated therewith in connection with agreement EAS one two two zero one nine one A, Emergency Violence Prevention and Reduction Program Administrative Services with Chris One Eighty, Inc., and to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to the agreement on behalf of the mayor's Office of Equity, Diversion, and Inclusion, for a term of two days, retroactively effective from January twenty-third through January twenty-fourth, twenty-five. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember Boone.
Thank you so much. Elm's ID number three eight one six nine, a resolution by Councilmembers Ishay Collins, Antonio Lewis, Michael Julian Bond, and, uh, Matt Westmoreland, supplement a task order fund in the amount not to exceed four hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars for the use under contract, number RFP S, excuse me, RFP dash S dash dash one two two zero three six three, Sustainability On Call Airport Services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, with the Atlanta Sustainable Aviation Partners twenty thirty-five, also known as ASAP, uh, joint, a joint venture for the Department of Aviation on a task order basis. All services will be charged to and paid from this account number listed herein and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the Transportation Committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins.
Elm's ID three eight two three four, a resolution by Councilmember Amir Farroki, requesting the mayor or his designee to install a pedestrian crosswalk on Linden Avenue Northeast between Peachtree Street Northeast and West Peachtree Street Northeast, and for other purposes.
That item will refer to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Farroki. I will read my three items in. Elm's ID three eight two three zero, an ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis and Mary Norwood to rezone from MR four B CBL multifamily residential conditional beltline overlay to MR four B CBL multifamily residential conditional beltline overlay for a change of conditions for property located at fifteen twenty-seven Northside Drive, northwest, and a portion of fifteen forty-one Northside Drive, northwest, and for other purposes. That will be referred to the zoning committee. Next item is Elm's ID three eight two four four, an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis to amend ordinance twenty-five O, uh, twelve fifty-six, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and approved as per City Charter Section two dash four oh three on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, to add and delete certain account strings and for other purposes. That will be referred to the Finance Executive Committee. My next item is Elm's ID three eight one nine zero, an ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Matt Westmoreland, Michael Julian Bond, and Ishay Collins, authorizing the mayor or his designee, or the chief procurement officer, or her, or her designee, on behalf of the City of Atlanta, to require from the Conservation Fund real properties located at twenty-four hundred to Forest Ferry Road, northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one eight, Fulton County Tax Parcel Number listed, and twenty-four sixty-five Warren Road, northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one eight, Fulton County Tax Parcel ID Number listed, compromising, comprising approximately twenty point three nine acres for a total purchase price not to exceed four million, nine hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and fourteen cents, authorizing the mayor or his designee on, or the chief procurement officer or her designee to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property. Authorizing site stabilization, due diligence, and other associated procurement costs to be paid from the Park Impact Fee North Account, amending the twenty twenty-six General Government Capital Outlay Fund Budgets in the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Department of Finance by transferring to and from the accounts listed herein, to authorize the city to enter into a facility use agreement to allow the Galloway School to continue to use the track and field and ball facilities located on the properties for a period of two years in accordance with its current schedule, waiving section two dash fifteen forty-one D of the Procurement and Real Estate Code, and for other purposes. And this will be referred to the CDHS Committee. And this will be referred to the CDHS Committee. Next, Councilmember Overstreet.
Thank you, President Protim. Hillis. Elms ID number 38148, a resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet authorizing the mayor or his designee to issue task order number RFPDEAM2309-1240025G1 for contract RFPDEAM2309-1240025G, job order contracting services small with Pariani Real Estate LLC doing business as Pariani Construction for the renovation of Fire Station 5 on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed $1,806,41.30. All work to be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
I will refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Thank you. Elms ID number 38191, a resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet authorizing the mayor or his designee to exercise the first renewal option for SS-S-S-1220177 EGIS Software Licenses, Maintenance, and Technical Support with Environmental Services Research Institute, Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Informations Management for a term of one year effective September 7, 2025 through September 6, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,100,000.0 and contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
I will refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Overstreet. Councilmember Shook.
Elms 38186, a resolution by Shook authorizing the mayor or his designee to exercise the second renewal option for each of the six agreements under the RFP listed. These are for A&E Services with Arcadis BPA, a joint venture, Brinley Peters &amp; Associates, Atlanta Water Partners Joint Venture, Jacobs Project Management, CDM Smith Benchmark Joint Venture, Wade Trim, Inc., and Williams Russell Johnson, and Hazen &amp; Sawyer PC with HDR Rohead Fox, a joint venture. This is for Construction Control Services Engineering, or Construction Control Services Corporation affecting from the dates listed through the dates listed in amount not to exceed blank to provide professional architectural engineering design and construction management services on a task order basis for capital improvement plan projects to allocate funding to a joint task order fund in amount not to exceed blank for use under the six agreements for the RFP indicated. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the FDAs indicated.
I will refer to the City Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Elms 38187, ordinance by Shook authorizing the CFO to amend the FY26 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund Budget in the amount of blank to transfer funds from watershed reserves for appropriations and funds to the CIP A&E projects and for other purposes.
I will refer to the City Utilities Committee.
And Elms 38232, an ordinance by Shook authorizing transfer of funds from various Atlanta City Council carryforward accounts to the appropriate distribution account to replenish funds for FY26 and for other purposes.
I will refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shook. Councilmember Wan.
Thank you, Mr. President Protim. Elms 38239, resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $250,000.0 to Ansley Park Beautification Foundation for Yona Park Improvements, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to make the payment from, well, I'll amend this in committee, District 6 Discretionary Fund Account listed herein and for other purposes.
I will refer to CDHS.
Elms 38240, a resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $400,000.0 to Olmstead Linear Park Alliance for Olmstead Linear Park Improvements, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to make the payment from District 6 Discretionary Fund Account listed herein and for other purposes.
I will refer to CDHS.
All right, an ordinance 38231, an ordinance by Councilmembers Wan, Bakhtiari, Westmoreland, and Collins authorizing a donation to the Atlanta Pride Committee in an amount not to exceed blank on behalf of the City Council to support the 2025 Atlanta Pride Festival pursuant to Section 6306 of the City of Atlanta Charter and for other purposes.
I will be referred to the Finance Executive Committee.
I'm not reading the gen, so you can scratch.
Got you. Last but not least, Councilmember Winston.
Get to those W's. Elms ID 38146, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a lease agreement with Grant Park Conservancy for the lease of a city-owned building within Grant Park located at 880 Cherokee Avenue for an initial term that shall run from the date of the execution through March 28, 2028, with one five-year renewal option in exchange for the Grant Park Conservancy's agreement to pay for all routine maintenance costs associated with the property and its use and any necessary routine repairs thereof, which would originally be the responsibility of the city for the purpose of further in the mission of the Conservancy and benefiting Grant Park and for other purposes.
I will refer to CDHS.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Winston. All right, that completes our items to be read in. Are there any general remarks, colleagues? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President Protim. Just two quick announcements. It's been a sleeper, but there's actually an election tomorrow, statewide election for Public Service Commission, so please go out and exercise the one true power you're guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States, and that's your power to vote. Also, the 19th is Juneteenth officially, so we want to wish everyone a very celebratory Juneteenth holiday. But thirdly, but most importantly, I was off the floor at the beginning of the meeting, so I wasn't aware if we had a moment of silence, but I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Coach Thomas Jefferson Wells. He is a legendary coach in Atlanta, particularly at Morehouse College, but he's also a former employee of the City of Atlanta Parks and Recreation Department for over 20 years. He passed last week, and he will be funeralized this Friday at 11:00 a.m. out at Timothy Fleming's Church. So if we could take a moment of silence for this great, great man who had such a great impact, not only in track and field, but he was a mentor to many who went on to great success, including, he ran with Edward Moses, who went to the Olympics for Morehouse College in '76. Coach Wells had just celebrated his 50th anniversary, graduated from Morehouse in 1975. I saw him at the graduation, he was there, he was the first of his class to be there in the special section right about 7 o'clock in the morning as we went to see my nephew, James Bond, graduate. So if we could take a moment of silence on his behalf, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Let's have that moment of silence. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President Protim.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. I didn't have a chance to say these condolences earlier. Thomas Jefferson Wells Jr., also known as Coach Wells, he lived over at Wheat Street Towers. He was the head of his senior community. He's somebody that I loved and cared about deeply. He was my constituent, and he was my friend. He passed after a long, long, long battle with cancer. You would not have known it talking to him. He will be missed deeply, and for anyone who wants to pay their respects, the family is hosting a viewing this Thursday at the Murray Brothers Chapel and a celebration of life on June 20 at Mount Carmel Baptist Church, starting at 11:00 a.m. And that is one thing, I also just wanted to ask people to keep my family and our communities in prayer, to our communities here, to our communities in LA, to our communities internationally, my family especially, and what we're facing in Iran right now. I ask that we continue to keep open minds and open hearts, not conflate people with the actions of their governments, especially in such a fraught time. And lastly, a little bit of good news, I want to welcome our new niece to our family. Her name is Nia, and she was just born a couple weeks ago, and very, very excited to have her in our family, and haven't gotten to meet her yet, but Nia, just know that we already love you so much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bakhtiari. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President Protim. First, I just want to thank everyone who came out to our senior job fair that we held here at the City Hall Atrium last Thursday in partnership with Magnolia Club. We had 350 seniors come here to not only look for job opportunities, but to get resources, learn about how they can navigate these choppy waters we're currently in, and it was a phenomenal event. So thank you to Stimulated America for your partnership and leadership, and to Magnolia Club for all that you do for our seniors. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the 250th birthday of the United States Army as an Army vet. I think that it's a momentous occasion to make it to 250 years. The Army predates the Declaration of Independence, and I want to make sure that we think about our military families, especially with all that is going on in the world, but with particular acknowledgement to our Army soldiers who are tirelessly working day in and day out to keep our country safe. The Army motto is "This we'll defend," and we'll continue to do that in the days to come. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Dozier, and we appreciate your years of service in the Army. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Council President Protim. I want to thank everyone who came out to our Free Men's Health and Wellness Event, the inaugural Anthony Tickman Jones event. Yeah, a couple hundred people actually come out to Roselle Fan and get screenings for, myself included, in our Zone 3 major, first time ever to get screening for prostate cancer. So I'm super excited to bring these resources to people. We had more than just prostate cancer checks, we had all STD checks, we had people checking their blood vitals right in Roselle Fan. So something we're going to keep going is we say bump cancer, bump cancer, bump cancer. The next thing I want to say, thank you to folks for coming out to our very busy weekend, to our diaper distribution day last week, and also to our, to our community healing event in Adair Park. Both events were successes and inaugural events. Lastly, I want to invite people to our, to the Community Healing Tour Number Two version. This, it'll be June 19 at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It will be hosted at Maryknutha Church. Do not miss this event. Do not miss this event. Once again, Community Healing Tour Two, June 19, 2025, 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Maryknutha Church, that is 2730 Brownsmere Road, 2730 Brownsmere Road. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, and I want to say I want to thank my colleagues. This is the second full council meeting I've ran as a Protim, and also the parliamentarian for keeping me mostly on track, but our president will be back for our July meeting. So thank you all, and I will ask the clerk to call the adjournment roll call, please.
Thank you, Council President Protim. We have Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post Three at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One. Councilmember Amir Faroki, District Two. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three. Councilmember Jason Dozier, District Four.
Here.
Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District Five.
Yes.
Councilmember Alex Wan, District Six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven.
Here.
Councilmember Mary Norwood, District Eight. Council President Protim, Dustin Hillis, District Nine.
Present.
Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District Ten. Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, District Eleven.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District Twelve.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there is no further business, this meeting stands adjourned.